To expand or spread. So today's meeting, I want to put you at ease that it's not a witch hunt or a meeting where we are going to be fighting with the unions or the departments. It's a meeting that is supposed to be a constructive meeting, a meeting that because we also as people who are supposed to be playing oversight on the department and even the federation, we are supposed to be kept abreast on what is happening within the unions, what are the challenges so that wherever we're able to intervene as parliamentarians, it then becomes easy for us to have an understanding of what is it there are challenges. Of course, we are going to have presentations and honourable members will then ask questions and make comments, but all in all, we are just discussing everything transformation. So if colleagues found themselves being asked things that are not part of their presentations or reports, as long as they are within the brackets of transformation within their own sporting codes, I think they must be able to respond. So that is why we are here today and we are here today, Honorable MEC, not because we want to have a talk show, but we want to have practical decisions that are going to be taken from this meeting onwards by the committee in ensuring that there is transformation in the sports of KwaZulu-Natal, in ensuring that a young girl from Kwaanzimago in Pochepstein is not only confined in netball and soccer, but what is it that can be done to assist us in expanding these codes, what is it that will assist us in transforming altogether this world so that when we speak about national unity, it's not national unity that is only in Durban, it's not national unity that is only found in Peter Maritzbeck, but when we speak about national unity and cohesion that sports, arts and culture, sports in particular is supposed to bring, I mean, for instance, look at how people of KwaZulu-Natal love sports. I've recently been to a few rugby games, Sharks were playing in the quarterfinals, I think last weekend. You can just tell that when you get to Kings Park, there is no race, there is no color, there is no class, so sports in its nature is supposed to bring about social cohesion. Sports in its nature is supposed to bring people together and we need to ensure that that is not only found in certain areas and in certain areas it doesn't exist, but we'll get to it when we get to these discussions and also discuss issues of community involvement as far as the NDP stipulates, how far are our communities involved in sports and how do we identify talents, because also we may speak about honourable members' transformation, particularly as it relates to racial lines, but we must never find ourselves racializing sports to an extent where we miss talent. Talent identification should never find itself being overshadowed by racial politics, to say, no, we want more black people there only because they are black, or we want more white people there only because they are white, only because they are Indian, but talent, I think, should never be overshadowed by racial politics also. So we will, at this point, give Honorable Kapisa, the MEC, to give us his remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Chairperson, Chairperson of our KZN Portfolio Committee on Sport, Arts and Culture, the Honourable Mkeese, Honourable Members of the Portfolio Committee, honour, I'm the Head of Department, Dr Sfunda, and the President of the KwaZulu-Natal Sports Confederation, Ubaba Omkunu, the leadership of the Sports Confederation, present and the federations accompanying the Confederation, senior officials of the department and all officials of government and the legislature, ladies and gentlemen. Honorable Chairperson, thank you for the opportunity to deliver these opening remarks as the Portfolio Committee kickstarts this important oversight engagement with the sport entities supported by government. I do need to emphasise, Honorable Chairperson, that all of them are volunteers. Let me extend our appreciation to the leadership of the KwaZulu-Natal Sports Confederation and the sport federations for availing themselves to this portfolio committee meeting. Today, colleagues, you are here to share progress on your efforts to meet transformation targets within the various sport codes that you represent. The South African sports in Darbo, which set in 2011, culminated into the establishment of a commission of the eminent persons group which was established and appointed by the Sports and Recreation Minister in 2020. The task of the EPG is to oversee and monitor the transformation of sport and recreation in the country. Its primary function is to ensure that the principles of the Transformation Charter for South African sport are implemented effectively across all sporting codes and levels. Today, our sports federations in the province are called upon to account in their journey of transformation towards achieving their set targets in meeting these goals. Honorable Chairperson and honourable members, transformation is a journey, it is a process. Sports federations are more than administrative structures, they are drivers of change with a critical responsibility to open doors for all athletes regardless of their background. We thank the Portfolio Committee for its commitment to accountability and for taking a keen interest on issues of transformation and development of sport. While the department regularly submits reports on the implementation of sport development programs, it is essential that members hear directly from those on the ground to better assess the real impact in our communities. We fully support this process of holding entities and partners accountable. This approach aligns with our funding policy, which is firmly linked to the transformation agenda. Federations are expected to set realistic targets and report on progress regularly. Whilst the department establishes and engages in a number of programs and initiatives aimed at equitably achieving and developing talent of our athletes in the province, however, the success of such depends on the active participation of sport federations. Our key development partners who oversee the codes, we aim to grow. Honorable Chairperson and honourable members, I am pleased to congratulate Durban City Football Club on the confirmation of their promotion back to the Betray Premiership. Despite facing delays due to protests which were dismissed with cause by the arbitrator yesterday, the club can now prepare for the elite league participation. Congratulations to the chairman, Mr Farukh Kadodia, the coach, Mr Simo Ladler and the entire team. We look forward to seeing them compete with distinction in the top tier of South African football. We are also hopeful that Midland Wonders will represent the province successfully in the ABC Motsebe League promotional playoffs and eventually achieve the NFD status to strengthen KZN representation in the NFD. This coming weekend, Chairperson, KwaZulu-Natal will host the iconic Comrades Marathon, a downhill run from Peter Maritzbeck to Moses Mabira Stadium, People's Park in Durban. Over 22,000 runners from around the world will participate in this 89.98 kilometer race. The department is proud to support this globally renowned event, which plays a significant role in promoting sports tourism and elevating the province's profile. To incentivize KwaZulu-Natal athletes, the department will reward the first, the second and third placed KwaZulu-Natal men and women home with a cash prize. The first three male and female athletes from KZN to cross the finish line will each receive a cash incentive of 60,000 for first, 40,000 for second and 20,000 for third, provided they finish in the top thirty. Our departmental team will also operate a water station at Injanga to assist runners on the course as their endurance and athleticism is put to test in the ultimate human race. On Saturday, the 7th of June, the KZN youth run will take place at Kings Park Stadium, Outer Fields, and members are invited to come and participate. This event held annually to the eve of the Comrades offers young people a taste of the Comrades experience. Some Comrades runners themselves also use it as a warm-up for the big day. Lastly, let me take this opportunity to also congratulate Rising Chess Sensation, Jorassu Jay, for his extraordinary gold medal victory at the 2025 African Schools Individual Chess Championships held in Kenya recently. The seventeen-year-old returned home on Sunday after winning all nine out of nine games at the Continental Under-17 Championship. Honourable members, these are but a few highlights of some of the sporting achievements and activities to look forward to and some that have just happened. In conclusion, sport is an important vehicle, as you have said, Chairperson, to fight social ills like drugs and substance abuse, crime, GPWF, poverty and unemployment. Our job is to ensure that talent is identified, nurtured, packaged and released to the market. As the sporting fraternity, we are determined to live up to the mantra of the government of provincial unity, that is of inspiring new hope for our citizens. I look forward to the presentations by our partners in sport development. I thank you, Chairperson, Yatowas.
I'll now hand over to, I believe it's the HOD who's going to be giving a presentation on the role of KZN in relation to transformation in sports.
Thank you, Honorable Chairperson. Please allow me to stand on the established protocols in the interest of time. Honorable Chairperson, honourable members, the presentation that I'm going through is in the packs. It will be the very first one and we've sequenced them the way they are sequenced on the agenda. So it will be the DSEC one first and then the Sport Confed and then the federations. Thank you so much, Honorable Chairperson. We have our marching orders contained in the Transformation Strategy and the Transformation Charter of this country and what is spelled out in the Transformation Charter gives us our mandate and that mandate begins with ensuring that we transform a sport to an extent where we change the demographic makeup of the sector. The second thing, I think, Honorable Chairperson, you spoke to it, to say that we also have to ensure equitable access and resource availability, skill and capacity development and that is us as a department providing an enabling environment. And then the third thing is for us to ensure ITID, which is Talent Identification Development and Progression, a pathway and we use a pyramid to ensure that that happens and I'm going to talk to that later. And then, of course, we also ensure that there is identification of talent beyond the pitch and that we also identify coaches that are talented, that we develop them and progress them and give them opportunities, working very closely with federations and the confed. We do that for managers of sport, administrators as well as technical officials. And then, of course, we have key strategic focus areas to bring about a transformation that we are tracking and that begins with us providing a financial and non-financial support and, of course, when we talk financial support, that is directly transferred to the entities that we fund, but others that don't qualify, they also do get support through goods and services, which is the non-financial support. When we do transfers, that is on the financial transfers, we do monetary payments to NPOs such as Sport and Recreation Federations, we also fund entities that are involved in the sector, NGOs as well as private enterprises. And, of course, when we shared the APP with members earlier in the year, we were very clear as a department what it is that we are seeking to achieve over the next five years. The vision carries it all and the pyramid that I spoke to earlier really carries our vision. We want a healthy, we want a creative and winning KZN, but we also want our province to be socially cohesive and winning includes the issues of winning in every respect, including our economy injection through sport, arts and culture. So that is what we are tracking. And in terms of the strategic, key strategic focus areas that drive transformation, I'm on the fifth slide now, we have very clear outcomes that we are measuring. The first is in line with good governance because for us, we want to balance the service delivery and good governance. So outcome one is about compliance and transparent governance and we actually deliver on it together with the federations. What we demand from the department, we also demand from those that we fund. And then outcome two is an increased economic contribution of our sector to address poverty, unemployment and inequality. The third outcome, measurable one, is the increased participation of communities to develop a creative, active, healthy and winning province. That gets carried through the pyramid, the performance pyramid. And then lastly is the very important outcome. Once all is done, said and done, we really would love to see a diverse, socially cohesive and moralistic society with a common identity and national pride. So when, as you were watching rugby, when our Sharks win, of course, the sense of pride is something that we all feel and embrace. And on the third slide, we are emphasising, Honorable Chairperson and honourable members, that we are very cognizant of the fact that we can't deliver on any of these outcomes unless there's a concerted effort to develop the capacity and to also get our athletes to be economically viable so that they can sustain themselves. We don't want a repeat of some of our athletes that really would end very well and, you know, come their years of inactivity, they have nothing to show. So that is what we are deliberately trying to foster with the federations and that's why on a regular basis, we enforce the overhauling of policies, strategies and structures and programs just so that there is proper alignment to the vision that we are carrying for the province. As much as today is about demonstrating a transformation of sport, we are also very cognizant of the realities out there, particularly when we go to the Olympic Games in Paris, it was very clear, looking at the composition of our national team, that we still have a long way to go. The funding policy of the department enforces the vision, it enforces what we would love to see happen in terms of transformation. We set out the transformation parameters for sport federations, those that they must achieve for them to actually be supported by the department. And what exactly do we look for when we assess whether they actually qualify or not? And that is on slide seven. We actually first and foremost look at the FISCAS, we look at how much funds we have and then, of course, we look at whether they are advancing, aligned to the priorities of government and this time around is the seventh administration that we are looking to enjoy alignment to our priorities of. And this time around is the seventh administration that we are looking to enjoy alignment to our priorities of. And then, of course, we also look at the progress of the organization and addressing the seven dimensions of the Transformation Charter that I spoke to earlier. And also, we look at them delivering or their ability to deliver on their set targets as per the Transformation Charter. And then the geographical decentralization of the provincial sport federations and/or entities, I think the Honorable Chairperson spoke to this. We do insist on a geographical spread so that there is equitable share of resources. And then, of course, the last one is the prevailing funding pressures linked to the economic outlook. All of those are the determinants as to whether we can or cannot fund a particular federation. The programs that we would consider for financial support are listed on the eighth slide. When they advance the capacity building, and of course, there, we insist on accredited, you know, skills development programs as much as we can. And of course, when they advance programs, we also check if they are in line with transformation and development, whether they will produce or give us yield any jobs and also contribute towards economic growth, and whether they will indeed take us to that outcome of social cohesion. We do promote our major events to boost the economy of our province, and we are proud that we've supported a number of those major events. Tennis, you know, the International One, the World Football Summit, many others that we've hosted, because we understand the importance of, you know, how they contribute towards the economy of our province. So I'm not going to read one by one, but TID and progression is also one of those that we look at very closely before we decide what, whether to support or not, and the extent of our support. And then on Slide nine, we also look at the criteria for financial support. Of course, they have to comply, and these are compliance criteria. First of all, the entity must be KZEN-based, and it must deliver a KZEN. And then they must also be affiliated to SASSCOC or a KZEN Sport Confederation, with an exception for private companies and trusts. They must be registered as an NPO, declared systems on internal control, very important for us to balance a governance, good governance, and this one very key, audited annual financial statements. And then the compliance with transformation imperatives is also a compliance issue, including the compliance with minimum levels of corporate governance, as well as accounted for all previous DSEC funding. In other words, the closeout reports have to be attached so that we can see a performance against the plan of the previous year. So our responsibility, as we indicated, is not about just ensuring OGO T they can deliver and that they have a compliance. We also have a responsibility to ensure, whilst we enforce the good governance, we also provide the necessary support. So on the next slide, we are looking at how we actually convene a number of workshops and provide platforms where we actually go through the vision, but also go through governance with them, the requirements, if there are changes, we communicate those changes and ensure that they are supported. So we do run governance workshops, so if they don't qualify for transfers, it's not like we leave them, we also ensure, the next time around, if they comply, we could easily transfer, but they must just be taken through by the hand and supported. And therefore, mentorship through a sport confederation also does happen for our federations. So we do it together collectively. We are proud, Honorable Chairperson, we in this province are considered as having one of the best sport confederations in the country. And this is testimony of a good leadership by the reigning president, who has actually had two successive terms. And I think this is the trust that KZEN has endowed on him, but he also currently is serving SASSCOC as well. So that goes to show that we do have good leadership in the province. The policies and legislation, on the next slide, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna look, you know, touch on all of them, but I am going to emphasize the importance of alignment to the Public Finance Management Act, because we transfer funds, so good governance for us becomes important. Companies Act, they are not necessarily all nonprofits, so there are those that can generally profit, and we do encourage that, you know, for example, the Sharks, as you mentioned earlier. We do encourage that for self-sustainability and also for growing the economy and ensuring there's contribution on revenue for the province through the value chains that they generate for the province. And then I do want to touch on these very critical compliance matters for EPFMA compliance, Treasury Regulations eight point four point two, CD, those are the key ones. Agreed objectives have been, have been attained. If they have not been attained, unfortunately, we cannot find further. And then, secondly, the transfer and subsidy, if it does not provide value for money in relation to its purpose, we also either cut the budget altogether, or we reduce, because we do insist on a compliance. And then on the next slide, we are, Chairperson, going to just highlight a pyramid that we've agreed upon to say when they deliver, when they sign an agreement with us, we do want to see our athletes, you know, perform from the bottom of the pyramid, from mass participation to high performance. But we do also insist on the bottom of the pyramid, which is promoting healthy outcomes, because it's not everyone that is, you know, going to end up being an athlete of note. Some of us will remain in the bottom of the pyramid, and of course, it is for recreational purposes that they are served by our entities. And then the next slide are the transfers of the federations that we have in house today. Iraqi Union, allocation, we also brought in allocation last year, just so we can see how they fed over the two years. Last year, they got two point three, this year, they're getting two point four, and this includes a conditional grant as listed. And then tennis, at three hundred, we've had to reduce slightly, and it's all because of what I've outlined. If you're doing well, of course, you know, the budget is also going to grow with you. If you are compliant, the budget is also going to grow with you. And then KZEN Cricket at three million, we have consistently, we've actually kept it at three million, and it also includes a conditional grant at a million rand. Aquatics, which is swimming, unfortunately did not have an allocation last year. We also don't have allocation this year due to inuncompliance in terms of our transfers. However, ONGA transfer, it does not necessarily translate to zero in terms of allocation. We do support goods and services. And then we also do want to highlight, honorable members, that vulnerable groups, we have a spatial focus on them as well. You will see with some of our codes as reflected here, particularly the intellectually impaired. You can actually see that they are doing very well, and they are accommodated, looking at the demographic as well as the medal count, the podium finishes, twenty-four gold medals and eleven silver medals, eight bronze medals, with eight individual trophies for top swimmers, which is those that came in second position. And we're talking of our disciplines here listed fifty meters, a hundred meter, and these are our athletes with disabilities performing at peak. We emphasize, OGO T, those, you know, that are considered as senior citizens are also not left out. We have a program, Yama Golden Games, and of course, we are the reigning champions at national, eight times in a row. Unfortunately, at this time, due to inclement weather, we could not necessarily deliver on the pitch, but they did go for Yama, 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 Yama Golden Games. Then the Disability Games twenty twenty-four, just looking at the podium finishes on disability, on chairs and various other codes listed here for disability, we can actually see, OGO T, which districts are doing well, because, you know, the positions are listed there, at position one, position two, position three. And then, of course, the capacity building issues. We are very clear that pyramid, when they are at peak, they are not going to get there unless they are supported through our academies. So we have academies that we fund, and there's five hundred and forty-four athletes that are in the eight academies. We also have a hundred athletes who have been part of the elite athlete development program. I'm not going to give details here, because when the federations, you know, present, it will be clear as to who we have actually taken to the apex of the pyramid. And of course, we also have fifty sport and recreation bodies that have been supported in the twenty-four, twenty-five financial year, including three thousand sport and recreation practitioners that were supported in the form of capacity development, eighty percent of the support in the form of accredited or code-specific training. And this includes, by the way, O Coach, we recently have O Coach Mchitwa, a lady who's really done very well for ladies football. And of course, she also is now, you know, has been taken through the coaching. She's, I think, at level, level three. So she's really done very well for women's football. We provide, Honorable Chairperson, Yama Sport scholarships. This is part of the capacity development to bring about transformation. And we're not going to read through everything that's here, but there's thirty sport scholarships that we have provided as a department. And we have indicated who the beneficiaries are, the codes, but also, I mean, the districts, the awodies as listed per district. We also did a count of race to say who has got what in terms of Africans, white, Indian, of the thirty scholarships. Jobs created on the next slide, we have this as a compliance issue as well. For us to fund, we do require that they deliver on jobs. We also lead from the front. Last year, we provided, we actually managed to create four hundred and forty-four contract employees, those opportunities, but also a cumulative total of two thousand and eighty-four for that year. And then, of course, we require them to do the same, and an estimated cumulative total of three thousand five hundred indirect job opportunities have been created because of the financial support that we've provided to our federations and entities. And this is a table that tells the five hundred and eight contract workers that we have as a department contracted per district. And these are not just, you know, you know, ordinary workers. These are those that can assist us drive our programs. So there are minimum requirements that you put on the advert so that they can deliver on the sporting program. And then this very last, last but one slide is looking at my elite athletes, those that are performing at high performance at the apex. And we have outlined here, you know, comparatively, two years, twenty-three, twenty-four, the number of athletes and the racial demographic, including disability. And we've also done a tally, you know, indicating the number of athletes in each of the districts that are performing at peak, that are performing at high performance. The last slide, Honorable Chairperson, the very last one, is where we are demonstrating infrastructure. Because as M E C indicated in his opening remarks, as much as we are to provide the enabling environment, we do have financial constraints. So infrastructure is challenging to a large extent, but we do want to say, Honorable Chairperson, that we do have infrastructure. Sometimes it's about us understanding that infrastructure has to be shared. So that if a school has infrastructure, it doesn't necessarily mean that other schools may not access, or if there is a community sports field in a particular ward, we encourage that the other ward that doesn't have, you know, should actually share until we have enough of a budget for us to actually, you know, construct one for that particular ward. So what type of infrastructure do we have? We have, we have a very deliberate approach in the provisioning of the infrastructure that is aligned to the pyramid. You will see that at the top, you have your, your top athletes, your elite athletes, and those are the ones that we would love to see access our fitness centers a lot. Not that we are excluding others, but the fitness center is designed with them in mind. Our combo courts, we have them at the bottom of the pyramid largely at schools, but also we have them at the apex of the pyramid, because they actually come in handy at any, you know, level of the pyramid. We also have children play gyms that we provide, particularly early childhood and outdoor gyms, and they are all listed per district. And then the sports field, the sports field is at the, at the bottom of our pyramid, and it's in line with the strategy of delivery of sport in the, in the province. So the total of sport facilities that we have throughout our municipalities, Honorable Chairperson, is listed on that page or on that slide, and we're counting three hundred and thirty-one facilities, Honorable Chairperson. And on this note, we thank you, Honorable Chair and honorable members, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, H O T. Um, we will now move and give to the President of the KZEN Sports Confederation, Mr. Nkono.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Honorable KZEN. Uh, the report is a little bit longer, so I will be touching on high-level issues. Uh, as much as I appreciate your listening skills, but I know you are excellent also on your reading skills. So I will leave that to you so that I'm able to finish the, the report. Introduction. The Guazul Natal Sports Confederation, KZNSC, is committed to driving transformation within sport across the province. The organization recognizes that transformation is not a one-time objective, but an ongoing process to foster inclusivity, equitable representation, and the empowerment of all communities focusing on historical disadvantaged groups. KZNSC continues to pursue transformation actively through the promotion of women's participation, equitable participation across races, and the expansion of opportunities uh, to persons with disabilities. This requires collective effort and daily commitment until these practices become embedded in our sporting culture. Let me highlight that we respect the slogan of a disability community that nothing about us without us. Hence, in our staff, in the office, we also have a person coming from that group. The Confederation emphasizes sport codes that are less resources, resource-intensive, such as basketball, volleyball, football, netball, chess indigenous games, and table tennis, as this can be easily introduced in under-resourced areas. However, it recognizes that coverage, that distribution remain uneven even within this. I did not mention all the codes that are in the scatter code report, these are some of them. The Confederation also acknowledges the challenges faced by sports requiring specialized environments of or expensive equipment, such as archery, surfing, rowing, and sailing, which are naturally limited to certain geographic areas, coastal regions mainly, because the open water surfaces are required for some of these sport codes, and you cannot fault Amajuba not to have some of those codes. Role of KZEN Sports Confederation. It is an oversight body for sports governance and transformation in KZEN, implements SASSCOC programs and ensures Confederation compliance, but also omitted the, also implement programs recommended by the KZEN DSEC. Coordinates with sports councils, districts. Coordinate towards sports councils, districts, local sports confederations. Very few wards, about a third of the wards in the in the province. May still be missing eh structures of what sports council. But almost two thirds are covered by those words. Ensures alignment with D D M and statutory governance framework. Strategic vision man mandate to be a structured, active and successful sporting province. Focus on access equity governance and sustainable development. To 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 add on the, to clarify the first one. Eh provinces are already queuing eh in our province to come and benchmark. Eh themselves against our province, that is due to the cooperation. Eh that we are having with K Z N D C. Not only the confederations are coming, but the provincial departments are coming. Because our provincial department eh has got much to offer. Eh scaling down eh to government structures eh of eh sports in 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 South Africa. I'm not going to to deal with all the template, but I will highlight eh the. Issue of the non-governmental organizations because I know you are very clear eh about the governmental one. Eh we are at 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 a top bracket. We are taking our cue from S A S C O, eh D C and Department of Basic Education, especially on school sports. But we also have other structures in different levels, especially the districts and local areas. So no district does not have a provincial, sorry, a district sports confederation. Eh we we skip the rest, I trust you. Eh vision for transformation. Eh inclusive participation, every community in K Z N must have fair opportunities to participate in sports activities. Representation promotes diversity and women in technical and leadership structures. Ensure fair and equal distribution of sports resources, facilities and development programs. Eh corner the days where kids have to throw stones eh and be told that it's a short foot. We need now proper equipment. Grassroots development eh focus transformation efforts on access accessible local spots to reach rural township. And disadvantaged communities. Eh the good governance, I I will take eh 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 highlights eh on those. Probably two, the first two, I'll leave the others. The K Z N C has clean audit since twenty seventeen. We have balanced the clean audit as well as service delivery eh in terms of our mandate. Eh sometimes it is said if we are good at the other, we are poor at the other, but we have balanced the two. We have got good standing with S A S C O and recognized through by the president of S A S C O's announcement. In the General Assembly eh eh as with that we are the leading confederation in South Africa. Eh engagements like this will even make us better than what we are. Thank you eh for for the initiative eh honorable chair. Let let's look at equitable access to sport. Focus on increase in participation, opportunities and benefits for all genders. Expanding opportunities in rural township and under-resourced communities. Assistant federation not rating provincial coverage as some federations struggle with resources. And information to to expand into districts, so the confederation assists them there. Ensuring accessible facilities and activities across all districts. Insurance sports infrastructure and environments are generally accessible, welcoming, safe and inclusive. Implementation of safeguarding policy and vetting of technical officials and managers, this is a very serious issue. And we are taking it very serious that all federations must have safeguarding officials. Because there have been problems before and even on ourselves eh. We had to oversee that the federation take necessary steps when one of their um officials transgressed. That led to that particular official suspended from the federation for ten years. Eh transformation priorities, low resource sporting courts, they are listed there, but not all of them. So those are the codes that we say there can be no excuse for them not to be in all eleven districts. Because they don't need expensive equipment such as the infrastructure and playing equipment. Eh getting to the next slide. Transformation priorities continue eh higher source and location. Spe- specific sporting codes, some sporting codes face natural and financial limitations. Due to infrastructure needs or expensive equipment, surfing, sailing, rowing, shooting. If I can take an example about shooting, we once assisted eh I think back in twenty seventeen. We assisted an athlete, a very good athlete in the athlete eh an under fifteen girl. Eh but she did not have a proper rifle to use in the sport. The cheapest you could get it as a second hand in Germany, costing forty thousand rennes. And thirty seven thousand rand to take it to the country, so it totally adds up at seventy something. So it's very difficult for all, for for most athletes to afford that, hence it's part of the limitations we are talking about. Next slide, demographical profile. Eh there is a eh diagram there, a graph that shows the demographics. But eh for today's federations, they will clarify themselves more on this. What I'm projecting is just eh eh a limited information. Next slides. Eh those are action pictures and the next slide is eh showing the next three or four slides. They are showing the distribution of federations according to districts. So eh we know wha- what is there in the district and what is not there. So others, they are categorized, the first slide is dealing with codes of federations whereby eh they are found in all eleven districts. The second slide is dealing with um eh the 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 codes that are found eh in in six to ten districts. The next slide is where a federation is found in three to five districts and the last one, oh no, yeah. Eh no, it's not the last last but one, it's eh 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 federations that are found in one to two districts. And the other one is only one district that is having, because we are trying to run away the notion that. When we see a certain sport code being played and we assume that it is available in K Z N. Whereas just most of the codes are only found at a T A G W I N and nothing in the eh rural area. So that's why we are categorizing so that we know where we need to em- to emphasize. Eh I'm not going to lament about resource constraints. Eh disability sport eh is inclusive eh in what we are doing. Further action photos. Eh. The the funding eh of the programs as well as the districts. Eh while we are appreciating that eh the department through the leadership of the M E C. Is now eh focusing eh capa- eh capacitating or or funding the districts. Because eh it's no use that eh we come with programs in the province while people are living in wards. Eh there's a progression of talent that is monitored through the pyramid eh diagram that eh. You can see that it's broader at the bottom and become narrower because at the top are. One official was used to say top, top, top ah athletes, so those are the. Eh international athletes as well as national athletes at the top, they can be in majority. But at the base we are brought because it's where talent ID is harnessed. And then entered into in 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 into the program and progressed eh right to the O P E S level. Eh but we are using mainly school sports as our hunting ground for talent. Eh of course with clubs, but eh it's difficult with clubs eh but with school sports it's easier. Eh the pathway that is focusing on performance eh structure in which talented of athletes can learn, develop and drive. Their full potential, so we 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 get it through the academy system eh that we have eh as well as the. Eh other programs that recognize eh talent eh progression. Eh those are still action photos. I I I want to stress eh with your permission, Madam Chair, on a slide that eh is talking about. The distribution of federations, sometimes we may be confused by seeing that. A sports federation is not listed in a particular district and yet we we see it being played. So there are sports federal sport codes that are played but with no proper structures. So those are not included there, I'm just making the example with eh eh traditional horse racing. So many districts are having competitions, but the proper structures are still to be formed. The the provincial structure is there, but eh sometimes you'll find them saying that it's there, but it's it's not listed. It's not a mistake. Eh the H O T has highlighted the success story of eh Jora Sujay. And this young man is also an example of seeing when a parent is very close. To the child's play playing sports, what happens? His mother is always there, maybe sometimes too much for our liking. But eh it it leads to such eh eh performances. Eh K N W I N transformation achievements, they are there eh started some time ago. Eh with eh more athletes from the township, especially Nanda, that eh are 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 participating. Eh there are listed successes eh of um. Eh successes for Wasulu Natal Confederation eh they are listed, they they list their own president. As a a member of S A S C O board eh who's who's also been tasked to lead the. Activities, overseeing activities happening in all nine provinces as well as school sports. But I think he will only be ready next year to answer questions around that one, because it's just a month old. Eh. The executive is listed there and the watch is also measurable. Sometimes democracy is always good, sometimes it's eh um a challenge. Eh in twenty twenty, we went to elections. And because of the contestations and the nature of contest- contestations, we ended up with only three women. Which was a setback to our progress, but we are happy that last year when there were elections in November. Eh which were attended by the honorable chair as well as the M E C. Eh six women were elected there. So they they are smiling there. Eh we have got eh. The information regarding the K K K Z N coastal eh cricket and inland. I do want to indicate, Starlo, Honorable, that eh in terms of the. National Sports and Recreation Plan, it emphasizes that eh one federation, one province, one federation. But we haven't reached, in fact, we reversed in cricket, we reached it. And then about two or three years ago, cricket South Africa reversed to. Cr- to to divide the one federation of cricket in the province. Um in order to be in line with their constitution as well as eh the issue of the. Eh eh. The 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 teams that needed to come to to compete. We are having a a struggle on that one eh because it comes with its own implications. That is the cricket as well as hockey eh which are having inland and coastal. All other federations, they are eh cooperative in the province. Sometimes not cooperative outside the province because there is an influence of the national federation. Um so those are the issues of cricket. I I'm not going to present for cricket, but I was just highlighting why instead of coming with one presentation for cricket. But we've got two eh I tried to. Eh talk over and skip other items in order to save time for the honorable chair. Eh to consider them both presenting, thank you.
Eh thank you very much eh M Kuno and eh also Siabonga. Doctor Sifunda eh with eh the presentation from the department. Eh on our agenda, I would like to apologize eh we were supposed to have eh discussions eh after these two presentations. Eh and questions eh from eh honorable members, this we do so that eh. In whatever that the department has been able to present then eh and and whatever that eh the sports confet has eh presented. Then we can be able to eh have questions, but eh I will be merciful to honorable members if they feel that they can be able to take. But I will be merciful to honorable members if they feel that they can be able to take all the reports and intake all of them and then do discussions later. Uh, we still have four reports and I think it's quite, um, it's quite, um, a big, um, information to, to, to absorb and process. And maybe let's deal with these two reports that we have received. And then after that, we will go to presentations from the unions. Uh, is that fine, honorable members? Thank you very much. Can I see hands that I would like to engage? On the two presentation, the first presentation we received was the role of KZN TSEC by, um, Dr. Sfunda, the H O D. And the second one is from KZN Sports Confederation, presented by the President, Mr. Mkunu on the overview of the state of transformation in various sports codes in the province. Honorable members, Honorable Mavimbela, Honorable Koli, Honorable Nkosi. Uh, thank you very much. Those are the hands, Honorable, uh, Mavimbela.
Ngabongakolo Slalo, siyabingalela ku M E C, konyenawonke, ahambesana nabo. Uh, we welcome the presentation that have been made by the H O D and the President. Uh, ngitabangoti, Honorable Chair, once we have allowed the federations or the unions to present, then it's where we will link these presentations. So ginombuzonje, o, o wodua kupela, o President, o Matingwane, uh, that talks to the constitution and how do we constitute the, the sport codes, especially with cricket, where we are having the inland and also the, the, the coastal. Ogoti, which constitution supersedes other constitution in terms of the sporting codes when you are supposed to have one federation in the province, but in this one you have to split according to their constitution. Ogoti. Bangozimeleke, eh, bazenzela ngendelela yabo. No ma iconstitution, iye tatele ektenini, umka posiseko, olao la eze mezalo oti. Kakosonkesizo kwenza ganja halo. No ma likona ilungelelo eliti tina, sizo zenzela ngendelela esibona ngayo. Goba, ge solasengati, umakungase kubenge halo. Namanyama code will follow suits and have their own constitution that talks to them. And in my little understanding or in my little knowledge, I think there must be the constitution that supersedes other constitutions where the federation or the sporting code take its constitution or aligned accordingly. That is the only question that I am having, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Koli.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and, um, I'd like to thank, um, the presenters for both the presentations. Um, mine is just more of like a clarity-seeking question. Um, and it, I think it comes back to the H O D's presentation where she did outline a few of the sporting codes that were getting funded by, um, by the department. Um, and I did see that the, on the KZN Aquatics has only getting support with goods and services. And what I'd like to get an understanding on, I, I know that there is a, a presentation coming up from KZN Aquatics. Um, I do know that swimming is one of the sports that we get, um, a very high medal tally and I think we're in the, swimming is one of the top three disciplines that we get medals in, whether it's at a national, um, level or not. But who does the intervention now to make sure that that federation becomes compliant in order that we can develop, um, and foster, uh, talent, um, so that we can improve that? Um, and then the second one was also, sorry, from, for, I think for, for the H O D. Um, your total of the sport facilities, just from my understanding, I just would like to know, do these include facilities that may be in, uh, schools? Um, so if we've got a total of 331, um, is it, is it only municipal owned or, or is it also possibly part of, um, uh, Department of Education possibility? Um, then with regards to, um, the presentation by Mr. Mkunu, and I hope I've pronounced your name correctly, sir. Um, it's just a comment with regards to grassroots levels. Uh, we do have, um, you know, at, at the bottom of that pyramid, we've got ward councils, uh, ward sports councils. But it, to me, it, it, it seems to be that there, there is a weakness there because I'm not sure that they're getting correctly monitored. Um, and I'm saying that from a, from a place of being in local government and being a ward counselor. And those sporting councils at award level generally were very last minute, very slapdash and had representation from somebody that was not, um, that had no idea on what was required uh, with regards to sport, um, and organizing. So that was just a comment, um, on that and basically I'm, I'm wanting to understand who is going to be monitoring that, would that be, um, whoever that would be? Um, and then with regards to the progression of talent, um, as I did see that the majority of it was at a school level, but because this is more of a presentation in a workshop, I'm, I'm wondering why, um, if the inclusion of clubs can also be in there because we do have a lot of children that not necessarily are having access to, to facilities at their schools and possibly would need to be, um, participating at a club level. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Nkosi.
No, thank you very much, Chairperson. Uh, uh, I want to welcome the presentation done by the H O D and the President. Uh, firstly, um, I'm on allocations. Uh, I can see the Chairperson that, uh, the swimming court, eh, did not comply with the, uh, financially since, uh, 2021 till now. So that means they have zero allocation. Uh, my question is, is there anyone representing the, the swimming court? If yes, through your chair, can we get a clarity on maybe one or two things? One can be the board members. Um, are the board members the, the same as the one who were leading or being in this?
Honorable Nkosi, not, not, not to stop you, ne, but, uh, part of the sporting codes that we have invited in this meeting, swimming is part of them. So they are still going to give us a presentation as well. So maybe if you have a, a question that wants to speak directly to the board, then we can, we can ask them at that later stage. Otherwise, un- unless you have a, a question towards the department or the sports confed for now.
Okay. Lord, thank you very much, Chair. Uh, thanks for, for that clarity that the board is here or any representative. So that means they are going to give us their presentation. But I think through your chair, eh, as E E Department, my question was, is there any intervention that was done after they did not comply eh, in 2021, 2022? Eh, gukona nukulelewa, abakthola, ogoti, maybe na next coming year, be was oti, bebe gu in compliance. And then under the job creation, Chair, uh, let me acknowledge, eh, the department for creating 518 jobs as much as, eh, kuama temporary, ama contract. But for the fact that, eh, abafowituba zotoshi katesiko, we acknowledge that and hoping that women and youth are included in this, eh, job opportunity as much as it's just a half of bread. But, eh, Chair, I think the report on job creation, as it is a contract, eh, job, it must include the starting and ending date, eh, not just the oti itinge. There are contracts, eh, akona, just to understand the oti. It's a three-month contract, it's a one-year contract, but ngalewa loko, we are acknowledging that. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much. Mine is, is not, uh, not many, um, umba logakol. I think number one, I, I want, I want, I, I, contrary to, to, to what, eh, Mr. Mkunu says, that sometimes democracy is a problem, I think the management of democracy is the problem. Uh, democracy itself, I don't really think it's a problem. I, I wanted to check if you have a, a policy that speaks to gender quota as far as, eh, elections of, uh, of confed leadership is concerned, so that you don't end up with the Mantonbela smiling alone in the picture. Uh, do you have a quota? Uh, and if you don't, maybe we, we can advise you that, eh, in, in your constitution and in your policies, it is important that you have a quota because even when there are groupings in a conference, in a conference, I mean, all of us here, most of us, except for, eh, for my, for, for Honorable Mabaso and Honorable Matlekwan, eh, most of us, eh, Honorable, eh, most of us are products of conferences, except for maybe four honorable members. So we know and understand that in the nature of a conference, what happens, eh, with, eh, with squabbles and factions and groupings and all that. You, but, but you have to find a tool to force the people in that particular conference to, to, to be able to elect women. And if you have that in a constitution and as a quota in a constitution, so even if there are differences as in, as, as to who leads what and who becomes, eh, or who do we put in whatever position, but they all know that they are forced by the constitution, that the constitution says it, it's 50, it's 50/50, 60/40 or whatever. But it then forces the members of the confederation to say, in whatever we're discussing, we are not only going to be discussing names of men, we are forced by the constitution to also discuss names of women that, for them to be part of leadership. I think maybe if you can, eh, give us a clarity on that, if you have a gender quota. Eh, if you don't, maybe it's just an advice that maybe next time when you deal with, eh, amending your constitution, maybe you, you take in consideration those issues so that you don't, eh, have the same problem that you have today as a result of the groupings, eh, when conferences sit. Um, to the department, I think one must commend the department, H O D, one on job creation. It's not enough, but the fact that there are people that, um, two, three months ago did not have jobs, but today, eh, they have jobs. And as much as it is temporary and it is a, a temporal, eh, intervention, but we commend that at least there is willingness, eh, to fight poverty as much as it is not enough because we do have an understanding, a full understanding that, eh, the sports and culture is probably the least funded department. But the willingness from the leadership of the department, we truly commend it, eh, Mshonishuka Pesa. Eh, it is important though that we try and find means of expanding the support that we can give particularly young people. As we all know that they are the largest beneficiaries of this particular department, eh, young people across, eh, eh, the, the, the province. I think, um, maybe while we acknowledge that the department itself, eh, is, eh, is a least funded department and while we acknowledge the financial situation that we find the entire country in, I think maybe we should try and see if we cannot be able to partner with the private sector. Um, so that, because pri- we, we understand private sectors, some of them can be able to actually partner with the department and build these facilities that we say, eh, we do not have. Eh, they, they can be able to assist, they have, most of them have programs of, um, giving back to the community. And I think we must be able to exploit that as, as the department. Unfortunately, um, we are in times as the country and as the province where, eh, things are abnormal and we unfortunately eh, cannot be able to act normal in abnormal situations. So we can't, we've previously relied on departments and government to do everything, but it's no longer possible for government and, eh, and, eh, and, eh, and, and, and particular departments to do everything. So it's, eh, quite important that, eh, in a season like this, eh, we are able to, eh, think outside the box. We are able to venture into other methods, eh, of trying to fulfill our mandate because when willingness is there, we can see that willingness is there and there are these challenges that are there. Probably just an advice to the department to say, maybe venture into, eh, creating partnerships, eh, with, eh, the private sector as well. I think for now, H O D, if you, if you will allow me, eh, together with the M E C, I'll stop here with the comments and questions that, uh, are, are directed to the department. However, eh, please allow us and other honorable members, if there is anything that needs us to link that in the presentations that are going to receive, if there's anything that needs us to link, eh, with, eh, the department, we will then, eh, pose some of the questions, eh, to you. Eh, over to you, um, H O D.
Thank you, Honorable, eh, Chairperson, and we, we appreciate all the comments and suggestions eh, made by the honorable members. We will start with the one that was, um, put on our table by Honorable Mavimbela. And I'm gonna request that, eh, the, um, Chairperson, President, eh, if you can address it. It has to do with cricket. Yeah.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chair. Uh, before addressing this one, uh, I know the Chair did not say I should withdraw certain comments be- because she is diplomatic, but I want to withdraw, eh, the issues that sometimes I mentioned around the issue of dipl- of, um, democracy. I think I chose the wrong words. Thank you. Uh, on the issue of the, for some federations not in compliance with the National Sports and Recreation Plan, uh, the constitution in, of the province reigns supreme. Uh, the province is led by the confederation. So the confederation constitution reigns supreme. Uh, but even when we don't recognize them as two, but they still go to their national federation as two because the national for the, federation is opening the door for that. Uh, but to be honest, I think the matter needs to be sorted out by Saskok. Because, um, if Saskok allows it, we can't stop it. Uh, but here in the province, we recognize Cricket Union as one. Hence, when we have got council meetings, we offer only two seats as we allocate to all federations. And then one has to sit here inland as well as the coastal and they will vote together as one. So we are not treating them as two, but we acknowledge that they are existing as two in the province. Thank you. Oh, let, let, let me take all of them. Yeah, yes. Okay. Uh, let me say, let me take the first one, uh, from Honorable Koli. Uh, the issue of the ward sport councils in terms of the Eh the issue of the ward spot councils in terms of the oversight role. Eh of course, they are not a loose cannon. They are also monitored by a higher structure. Eh for districts, there is a local sports confederation above eh the ward spot councils. As a result, the ward spot councils are involved in electing that structure and that structure oversees eh them. But in the metro, metro has got a li- a different eh demarcation, demarcation. They have got what they call districts where they grouped eh ten eh wards into eh eh a district, which we are still contesting with them in order to change because it confuses. Umsyat is a district and ten lo- eh wards in 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 eh metro are also a district. So ended up having ten districts within the metro. But in the metro so far, it's that district that supervises the ward spot council. But in the rest of the other districts, local sports confederation are supervising that. Eh this one, progression of schools, of talent that is mainly happening through schools. Eh as you'll hear eh Madam Chair, from some of the presentations from the federations, you'll find that they are relying more on schools. The reason is that eh, one of the reasons, it's a very expensive exercise to have a club. Eh you take a person who has got a club, he has got to look at transport, equipment, affiliations. And this person is a volunteer and I don't know what hap- why eh I think the Honorable M E C will also agree with me. Most of the people that are owning the clubs are not people who have plenty to spend, but it's love that that they have. So the schools then provides eh the talent that would have lost if we only relied on club system. Club system is there, eh eh it's it's there to form structures and provide talent. But the 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 children during school hours, they are school teams. And over the weekend and after hours, they are clubs. So they, the very same people that are we are providing in school sports as well as the club sports mostly are the school going age. Because even up to the tertiary, USA is is also there. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable M E C, I'm sorry eh to delegate this upwards. Um I will start with eh Honorable Coli eh because eh President has tackled some of the questions, I'll 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 tackle the rest. E aquatics um no transfers, the support or the intervention. I think it's important, all members eh to have them speak for themselves. But from where we sit, there is a national eh intervention because they are under administration. So there is a full on um intervention there, Honorable Coli. And we have not allowed them to work on their own, that national intervention. We are there very close to the to the to the process. Um as we indicated, WOTI, when they don't comply, we don't sit back and say, we you don't comply and then we leave them. We sit and ensure that eh they actually get out of the woods. Then the next one on um sport facilities, yes eh Honorable Coli eh they include school infrastructure. If you look at the combo courts, we've listed them eh, those combo courts are largely in schools. Yes, there are those that are in communities, but a big eh majority of them are in schools. Eh and of course, the rest will be in the in communities. Um the children play gyms, we would have them in in the facility where the little children are, you know, your E C Ds and and so on. So it's a combination of schools, community, um municipalities. And then on the progression of talent, I think that has been tackled eh Honorable Coli. Honorable Ngorosi eh, I think you also spoke to the very same issue, the concern around zero allocation. I do want to emphasize, honorable members, WOTI, when they don't get a transfer, it's not like they are not supported financially. We can only support through goods and services. So if they have a program and they would list the things they want to do, if they need equipment, they would still get equipment, but it will have to be through the department. Um and then the um the intervention, I think we've already spoken to that regarding inun compliance. Job, jobs created, thank you, honorable eh member. We appreciate your comment on on the on on the jobs that are created. I do want to emphasize that it's not just the department. One of the funding criteria is that they align to what we do. If we want to grow the economy through sport arts and culture, they also expect to do the same. If we are saying job creation, they also do the same. So the figures that we presented come from the department and they also would be presenting their own eh job opportunities that they have provided. We do include women and and youth. Our department is very youthful eh, a good majority of e workforce of the department is young people. When we talk health eh health eh healthy lifestyle coordinators, very young people. Sport assistants that go to schools to support and also render community sport, very, very young people. So this department really doesn't eh you know, struggle with the youth badge. We accommodate and ensure that it's supported. The duration of the contracts, um sorry that we did not list it, but it would be a one year eh eh contracts eh the majority of them. And then eh to the Honorable Chairperson, I think this one of the 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 gender quota will be the for the President as I end my input. Uh but in terms of jobs, we take eh the comment eh that eh the Honorable Chair directed to to the department. Eh particularly the issues around expanding to accommodate more, because indeed there's high unemployment. And I think one of the strategies that we feel really works is what I've just shared, which is not just the department. We also get our federations eh to create job opportunities as well. Whomever we fund is also expected to do the same. The last one that I'm going to respond to before I hand over to the President for the gender quota are the partnerships with the private sector. Eh a very good point raised by the Honorable Chairperson. We are pleased to announce, Honorable Chairperson, that this is a requirement eh for eh whomever we fund as well, which we want to build self sustainability. And I must say, when they present, some of them will will actually share eh with you who their partners are. Um you know, your Hollywood beds eh, Kings Park in Jesebona, Iba Lee Wela Pan, which means there's a huge chunk of eh e funding that comes from e corporate. So they really are, some of them are really doing very well in terms of raising funds. Because if they were to depend on government, depend on us, they would not do all the work that they do. So we commend them for eh you know eh eh ensuring that they resource mobilize beyond government. And eh M E C has a um a committee that has been put in place that eh is ensuring that we fundraise as a department. We eh going to actually have him eh we coordinating eh eh business. One of these days, there'll be a whole workshop where we will have eh incorporate of K S A N to engage with us in terms of their participation in school sports and culture using their C S I. And we also beyond corporate, we are looking at our investors. We just had a trip recently um to the UAE. And one of the things that we presented there was this very need eh Honorable Chairperson to see if we can get investors on board, particularly for um eh infrastructure projects. Eh thank you, Honorable Chairperson eh President on the on the gender quota.
Thank you, H O D. Eh let me say that S A S C O K eh is having two of the second administration eh eh team eh having started the issue of quota system. Eh we are on our way eh to that one. Maybe I think the mistake we had would that eh that made us not to start the quota system as soon as possible. We wanted to copy S A S C O K on fifty percent women. And we realized that we're not at that stage. Especially when eh at that stage, we did not have a single chairperson who is eh eh a female eh in a district. So we would have been too early for fifty percent. But we are giving an advice that fifty percent is not a cut off. Deal, we should have started ten or twenty or thirty or forty to be manageable. But I think now we are there at fifty, that we can do, already we are fifty without the quota. But sometimes you lose the gains. So we need to ensure that eh with the next round of eh amending the constitution, that it is embedded in the constitution so that we don't have fifty when we like, when we don't like, we we've got to it. Eh thank you for the advice eh Madam Chair.
Thank you very much eh H O D and eh Mr. Mkunu. Eh we then move to the unions eh, I will start with eh rugby, eh transformation in rugby. You have a follow up question, sorry. Yes, yes, Honorable Marvin Bella.
My my apologies, Chair, coming after you have eh concluded the matter. But there is one thing that I want a clarity on, that the issue D raised when she was starting the presentation. She she said eh this leadership are volunteers. I I I want to understand, they are volunteers in what sense? Because some of the question might be not directed to them, because when you are da- when you are doing a volunteer work, there are some some of the things that you can not eh do. So if she can clarify the volunteer status of the leadership that is be- before us, I think that will also assist us, because we'll be talking to their constitution eh, the volunteers and the constitution and everything, all those things. Thank you, Chair.
Well, I'm not sure, but I I think that came from eh the 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 remarks by the M E C.
So so. Oh, was the M E C?
Yes, it came from the remarks by the M E C eh, I remember I said, these are volunteers. So maybe we can give the M E C to explain they are volunteers in eh in what extent. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chairperson, Honorable Marvin Bella, Honorable members eh, President and eh the federations, the H O D and management eh. In 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 almost most of the countries, Chairperson, when it comes to sport, those people who become boards of eh the different federations are 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 elected to occupy those positions eh on volunteer basis in the sense that they don't get paid. For example, here we have got the Sports Confederation in Kwasuruna Tal. None of them is paid for the positions into which they are elected. They do that for the love of sport. The same goes for the federations that we have. They get elected into the positions for which they are not paid. We have got suffer in the province, the Chairperson is, for example, Mr. Ngwanya eh, it's not a position eh that he is employed into. He's elected to occupy that position for a number of years for which he does the work that doesn't get paid for. The exception will be when they have to eh appoint or eh where where they have to employ staff that is assisting them in the offices, that will only be the exceptional cases. But those who are elected as board members through their eh meetings and conferences, they do so voluntarily, they occupy those positions voluntarily. What I was explaining is eh Wawumkuno is president who doesn't get paid for being president of the sports confetti, et cetera, et cetera. That's what I was meaning eh Chairperson, thank you very much.
Eh thank you very much eh eh honorable members eh, Honorable Marvin Bella. I think eh they are here because they are fully accountable eh on eh on 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 the unions and the federations that they are leading. And eh I don't think that eh there are questions that eh they will be allowed to evade or avoid. Eh so they are here because they are fully accountable eh, they've been entrusted by eh people in their various sporting courts to lead eh in the province of Kwasuruna Tal, so they are fully eh accountable. I'll hand over to eh the presentation eh by Rugby Mr. Ngwanya, am I right? Thank you.
Good morning eh everyone, Honorable Chair, Honorable members. Eh my name is Sandy Lengwanya, I'm the Junior Vice President of the Kwasuruna Tal Rugby Union. With me is Mr. Kevin Chin Louis, our General Manager of the Kwasuruna Tal Rugby Union. Um thank you for the opportunity to come and present the issue of transformation and development in respect of rugby. It falls within my portfolio. As the Junior Vice President, I'm I'm, it's my portfolio of which is transformation and development. Um I think to start off, I think it is important that um I give clarity in respect of the structure of rugby in Kwasuruna Tal. Where you get the federation itself, which is the Kwasuruna Tal Rugby Union, which is the amateur arm. Our responsibility is to run amateur rugby and schools rugby. We are referees also fall under us and coaching also falls under the amateur arm, which is what we refer to as the federation. You then get the Sharks, which is the Sharks um P two I L T D, which is the commercial uh arm or the commercial company that own that runs the professional arm. They run the Sharks senior team, they run the Sharks under twenty ones and the Sharks under nineteen and the Sharks sevens. The Kwasuruna Tal Rugby Union used to be the majority shareholder in the company. We are now eh my, we are now a minority shareholder where we own twenty six percent. And the majority shareholder is an equity partner, M V M Holdings. They are, they are majority owned by um an American company and but they're also local shareholders in M V M Holdings. That is the current setup eh, we do have three seats on the board, if I say we do have three seats, that is the federation has three seats on the board of the Sharks itself. That is occupied by the President, Mr. Graham Mackenzie, the Deputy President, Mr. Sabe Longosi, and our Treasurer, Mr. Mark Teffler. I used to sit on the board when we had more seats and we had the majority up until twenty twenty one. So I have not been on the board of the Sharks since twenty twenty one. However, however, I was there from twenty sixteen up until twenty twenty one. Um that is the current structure of Kwasuruna Tal Rugby Union. The the Natal Sharks ladies team that competes in the Kerry Cup used to fall under the Kwasuruna Tal Rugby Union, we are responsible for the 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 funding, the preparation of the team. There are discussions that are currently in place, that are at an advanced stage, that the Kerry Cup team then will be be will be the responsibility of the Sharks, where they'll be better resourced, they will have a better chance of being at a level to compete effectively. So that is the current discussion that is taking place. In respect of transformation and development in Kwasuruna Tal, there is a a set target in respect of um transformation and development that that starts from the governance being the council in respect of of administration that are the people that fall under Kevin at the office. And it then filters down to the playing affairs, that is that the coaching, the team managers and the the players. And um in respect of our targets, they are set out in the appendix of our constitution where in the appendix of the constitution, it it clearly states that the composition in respect of representivity in rugby should be fifty fifty. Um in respect of eh the board currently, um we are not at fifty fifty yet, because there are currently twenty seven members on 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 the on on council and thirteen African and fourteen not. However, if one looks at management, we are at However, if one looks at management, we are at hundred percent. Um, in respect of administration as well at the office, we've achieved eighty six percent. And in respect of, um, a hundred and four part time employees that that are employed during the rugby season, who are our hot spot coaches, who are our coordinators in the Verest District, we have a hundred and four part time employees and we have achieved hundred percent in respect of representivity in in that regard. In respect of the athletes that we track, out of the four hundred and ninety six of those athletes we've achieved, um, uh, we have two hundred and seventy five, um, out of the four hundred and ninety six. In respect of three thousand two hundred and eighty coaches, we have one thousand four hundred and thirty nine coaches that we have achieved. And and that is the through the efforts of the 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 administration at the office, um, who are the people on a daily basis who are tasked with implementing the policy from council. In respect of, um, teams that we put out, um, on any tournament or in respect of any, um, um, any leagues that we participate, we currently have only an under thirteen male team. We do not have, we do not have an under thirteen female team as yet. And in respect of the under thirteen male team, the representivity is fifty six percent. We then have both under nineteen and under nineteen male and female teams, where in respect of the male teams, we have achieved thirty three percent. And in respect of the female team, that is ninety six percent. Now, this is in respect of last year. This year, the team in respect of the under nineteen males, we have not achieved the fifty fifty target. And this year's team has recently been selected, under nineteen males, who are going to be participating in the nineteen Academy Week and under nineteen Craven Week. And we have achieved seventy percent in respect of the twenty twenty five team selection, who are going to be taking part in in June and July in those various tournaments. Um, in respect of the senior teams, the senior teams, we in respect of the males, we have put the senior teams figures there for purposes of showing that there has been progression even in respect of the senior team, that even though it falls under the Sharks. However, the majority of the players who have come through to ensure that their team achieves the the E.P.G. uh, targets, that they come through our structure and come through our program. So out of the fifty five contracted players, twenty four of them are players of color. And out of the twenty four players, we can name a number of players who actually started from the under thirteen talent identification program that we run in conjunction with the Department of Sports and our partners Hollywood Bet Foundation, where we have managed to ensure that there has been progression that can be tracked and then and then it can be seen, um, that you can, it is possible to start from school through club and end up being at that professional level. Where you have the likes of Upepsibutalezi, uh, who is from Shulshuwe, Delimpilo Kumeto, also from Shulshuwe, who's recently signed with the Bulls. You have Ufezogullembata, who's from Esikawini. Um, you have Ukutamkunu, who is from here in Peter Maritzbek. You have, um, you also have the likes of, sorry, Untutugomkunu from Peter Maritzbek. You have Ukutamkunu, who's from Kaitan, who's recently signed for a club in Japan. So you can see a progression in in respect of of the program that has been put in place for transform transformation and development. But also in respect of clubs as well, is that clubs also play a role in respect of developing players to achieve the representivity that everyone wants to see on a Saturday or on a Friday when the Sharks are playing. Where you have players such where you have players such as Grant Williams, who came to KwaZulu-Natal, played club rugby. He didn't have a contract and he came through the club structures up until he became a starter for the Sharks and he is now a springbok. We have players like Olu Kanyo Am, who came to KwaZulu-Natal. He was enrolled at the South Coast Rugby Academy, which is run by one of our districts in 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 southern Natal in Uvongo. And he's now and he's now a springbok. We do have, um, also in respects, in respect of women rugby, where you have players who have come through the the structure that has been put in place. If one can recall that the very first springbok women group that was put in place, Uzine Tombela was currently now the Vice President of Sports Confed, was part of the group. Uudoli Mavume Wana was also part of the group. And currently, we have female players who have come through the system of it development, who are now part of the current, uh, springbok women, uh, women team. Where Unobu Mchwaka from Imbeendle, she is part of the team, just just to name, to name a few. It is not enough, but but we are hoping that if we can, we can demonstrate with 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 names and faces and identity to show that in conj- in in conjunction with our partners, the department, the Sport Confed, with our with our sponsors, that we can actually, we can actually achieve um, the issue of the transformation. Um, it's also worth noting if if, um, if I can, if, um, if I can be allowed, that that, um, the issue, the challenges, um, I think the challenges across the board from all federations in respect of facilities. Everyone is gonna be is gonna is gonna talk about facilities. And I think the department is correct that the facilities are there. Maybe it's an issue of better coordination and sharing and and sharing of facilities. Um, I can give an example of, um, a rugby team, um, Nagludem Rhinos from, um, Mkambatini. Whenever they play their games, they have to hire two kumbis to come to Woodburn Stadium in Peter Maritzbek just to play because they do not have a rugby shield or in in in, um, town in Nagludem. So in respect of them, they incur that additional expenses to come and play their games, even home games, they have to come to Peter Maritzbek. And that is a recurring theme in respect of challenges, which is the high transport cost in respect of transformation and development clubs. They have the highest cost in in respect of transport than any other clubs. That also then impacts on the number of transformation and development clubs that you can have. Because whoever then runs the club must be aware of the high transport cost. In respect in respect of goods and services, in respect of kits and equipment, the department has been brilliant in that regard, that the department has been coming on board and assisting. Hollywood Bet Foundation has also been coming on board and assisting in respect in in respect of kits, equipment and the likes. But the highest expense for anyone to run and sustain a club, especially for transformation and development, will be your transport cost. Also, the 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 issue of better coordination and sharing of facilities, that is something that in rugby, we will need assistance, uh, maybe from the Sport Confed or maybe from the municipalities whereby all the all the codes can learn to share the the limited facilities that we have so that you don't have teams having to travel to travel to to Peter Maritzbek from Mkambatini just to play to play their games. Um, in respect of the of the presence and representivity in districts and participation in districts, um, rugby is present in all districts in respect of participation and in respect of all the structures apart for disability. Where only we have only a structure in Umkungundlo, Eteguini and in Ogo. That is that is, um, an area that we have identified and we are we are liaising, we have a subcommittee from the Elson Schools, which is the learners with special educational needs, where where the we are engaging with them as part of as they're part of our of our structure, that to assist us in ensuring that in the other districts as well, we have a presence there. Because out of only these three districts, we have, um, Elson, uh, schools playing, playing rugby. It is an issue, it is an issue that we need to deal with. It's an issue that, um, that needs to be attended to because because we we can't leave the Elson schools out of playing rugby because they've shown an interest. In fact, there is an Elson week that takes place a week before the under eighteen Craven Week that takes place. So so for us to be competitive in the Elson week, we need to to have more players and more schools and a bigger pool in respect of doing that, in 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 respect of putting out a competitive team. Um, it is also important that, uh, we highlight that we we are fortunate that we have a commercial arm, being the Sharks P2Y LTD, who assist in trying to monetize their brand and also their players so that we can be able to generate more funds for transformation and development. We are currently in discussion with the Sharks and the discussion are at a stage where it will be finalized because the Kerry Cup is actually starting is starting next month, where some of the Kerry Cup games are going to be taken to the township and the districts. And that profit that are then generated from those games will be plowed back to transformation and development in those particular districts. We just need to have the final agreement in place because it also affects other stakeholders like your supersports, your S.A. rugby and the sponsors and the season ticket holders and the likes. But however, that is a discussion that is at an advanced stage. Also, in respect of ensuring that we are sustainable in respect of our program, the Sharks have agreed that for every ticket sold, an amount of one rand will be will be ring fenced and be put solely towards rugby transformation and development. So that is something that started towards the later part of the U.R.C. tournament. It is something that we look to carry forward to the Kerry Cup and with the new U.R.C. Rugby Tournament starting. So with the full season, with about eighteen to twenty home games, for every ticket that is sold, an amount of one rand will be ring fenced and then will be plowed towards transformation and development. That will go a long way in 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 ensuring that our program is sustainable. We do have, um, upcoming events that, um, that we would like to bring to the attention of the of the Honorable Members of the Portfolio Committee. If they if they are available to attend and then they can be able to see for themselves what we talk about when you talk about transformation development, because it becomes difficult when you're talking numbers. And if you attend a tournament and you see the faces, you see you see everyone running around. And and in fact, the the dates, um, are contained in our in our presentation, where tomorrow there'll be a schools capping ceremony that's going to take place at Kings Park. So all the players who've been selected from under twelve to under nineteen to represent the province. There is a ceremony that takes place in the middle of the stadium in Kings Park with the parents, the coaches. The Sharks players are present and it becomes a question and answer session as well, where the players, where the where the where the selected, uh, schools, uh, players, sorry, from the schools can participate. That is when they actually get, that is when they get the actual blazers, their ties and their kits. So it 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 is something that, I know it's a short notice and I will make sure that the next one, there will be ample, um, notice so that whoever will be available or is available can come and see when the players are sitting there when we talk about transformation development. We have the Schools Week coming up in June and July, where your Craven Weeks, your Academy Weeks, your Grand Common Weeks, your Under Sixteens, where you can see our players from Transformation Development who are actually taking up space in that particular in 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 those particular tournaments. Um, our flagship program, being the Talent Identification, is taking place in Glencoe. Um, the date, um, I do have the date, but for some reason, it's not in front of me. However, it is taking place, um, in September. No, sorry, taking place in August, that is up in Glencoe. That is our flagship tournament where you have all the districts taking participating with the girls' teams, um, with the girls' team also from the districts who are who participate. And from and from that tournament, a team is chosen that participates in the Ibrawe Week that takes place in December. Also, a team, two squads are then selected who form part of a high performance program where we invite them to various camps over over months, where we prepare them to participate in trials to increase their chances of being selected into these provincial teams as well. We also select a team from 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 a girls' team from the tournament who also form part of a high performance program whereby we are building them towards the under eighteen and under eighteen Girls Week that also that takes place, that takes place in Johannesburg. It's a second place at G.P. High School for the past two years. Um, the achievements, um, that have been, um, that have, that we have witnessed, I think the, um, uh, if you if you look at U Upepsibutalezi, who came through the under thirteen Talent Identification Program and is now a springbok player. You have Untutugomkunu, who came through the whole program, he's now a springbok player. We have Grant Williams, who came through our club system and is now a springbok player. You have Olu Kanyo Am, you have Ozine Tombela, she's sitting right here. So if 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 the program, if if we continue to to run the program honestly and well and be accountable with, uh, people's funds that are entrusted to us and we we focus the program because in the past, it we found that it was too wide. And 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 with with better focus, we can actually achieve, um, we can achieve a lot. And in closing, um, Honorable, um, Chair, that there is a list, I don't see it in the printed pack, but it was in an email pack, a list of schools who are actually taking part from the Verest District. These are schools that never used to play rugby. However, these are schools that in our district who are now playing rugby and actually they're doing quite well. From, if you look at Ubuli in a high school in Okallamba, you're looking at, you're looking at Okonbe Primary School, you're looking at Sia Lomola in Indindale, you're looking at Inlandleni in Popomeni. I can name a lot of them, but but these are the schools who are actually taking, in in also Sia Vugelwa in 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 Mandeni. These are all the schools that the list is there to show, to show to to show to the members that 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 the development program in respect of rugby is 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 there and the development program is actually, um, is actually thriving. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Kuniivagash na mlanjani pasigal. Uh, I have three mosquitoes, Honorable M.E.C., in this committee and I'm always abused by them. Uh, but it's fine. Uh, thank you very much. We will move to the presentation, uh, on the transformation of cricket. Who is going to be giving us the presentation?
Um, Sun, I will start with Keizerin Inland.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, greetings to the chaperson and to the rest of the honorable, uh, honorable members and my colleagues, uh, who are the delegates for the purposes of this meeting. I'll be representing Keizerin Inland, of which Keizerin Inland Cricket is a non-profit organization who's been given an affiliate status in twenty twenty two by Cricket South Africa. And we've been in operation as a professional body and also as a non-profit organization since twenty twenty two. Our building is, uh, allocated in, um, our headquarters in P.M.B. Over, where you usually host, uh, from time to time, the opening of the legislature. As you know, that building is more of now a heritage building that needs some serious intervention. And I would truly hope that now that we've received such a platform to come here, there are such things where we really need the manpower from the, uh, there are such things where we really need the manpower from the uh the honoreables uh who are in this platform to assist us as we operate under we are leased under Umsunduzi Municipality who's got its own challenges and doesn't really have enough funds to assist us in that regard as some of the other things that are required when it comes to social certification. Our building is actually uh not in compliance. Those were my opening remarks. We do have the um we are led by uh the C E O who who is um we are led by the president who is white and we do have eleven board members within uh uh our 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 federation. One C E O, uh four S K members, uh four uh senior management, no mid-management. Uh, we've got about twenty-eight staff members that are employed by the federation. And then when it comes to the athletes, we've got about hundred and twenty-two athletes, who are one hundred and ninety-eight uh coaches, of which from those athletes that are hundred and twenty-two, we've got about fifty-seven which are Africans, uh four coloreds, thirteen um uh Indian and then forty-eight whites. Coaches, there are forty-five which are Africans, ten coloreds, sixty-four Indians and then seventy-nine which are whites and then technical officials, nineteen. In total, three Africans, one colored, two uh Indians and then no whites. When it comes to the uh senior team selections, we've got about five. And in that five, there are three Africans, uh no coloreds, two um Indians. And then junior selectors, there are about fourteen. Junior is is from eighteen downouts and then there are about fourteen officials and then uh eight Africans and there's no uh coloreds and then uh three which are coloreds. From team many uh senior team managers, we've got about two, which is one uh uh Indian and one white. Uh, two junior team managers, we've got about four, two Africans, one Indian and one white. When it comes to the uh uh males and and females, all the numbers that we've given, that we do qualify as per the member parameters are required by C S A. So the man, the we are well represented when it comes to uh our the required uh um. Yeah, so uh we do operate in the uh six districts of which our most of our districts are very rural in nature and we are still in our baby steps when it comes to the operations and we are still on the development stages and even our team uh uh senior team was partic- has has been participating in the Division Two, which is uh uh with regards to the domestic structure for for crickets, which is Cricket South Africa, we've got Division One teams and Division Two teams. And then Division One teams are the ones that play uh um in in a competition, in a higher competition that provide the platform whereby players are being selected from all the other franchise that or unions that are uh in Division One. And where we select our protea teams are from the Division One. But when it comes to Division Two, those teams are looked into the pathway programs that are within Cricket South Africa. At this point, we've got um number of participation when it comes to junior clubs. Uh, in Amachuba, we have none, which is from under nine to under nineteen. However, we do have a hub program that is uh in terms of its success, it's rely holistically from the assistance from the Department of the SAC. And if we did not get an assistance to uh actually fund the program that is run there in terms of the hubs program, then the union i- it's not in a financially stable situation where we can be able to sustain this uh that status quo to run that hub. And then when it comes to a number of all uh primary schools that are playing in uh in Amachuba, there are about ten, a number of schools, senior schools are about eight and then number of uh uh private school, there is one. And then there is one senior, that is Amachuba. When you proceed to um Herikuala, Herikuala, there is zero junior setup and then primary schools, there are about seven. Senior schools, there is one and then private schools, there is none. Um Kongunlovu, we've got about eight uh 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 under nine to under nineteen clubs that are participating. And then when it comes to primary schools, there are about forty-one. Uh, the the then senior schools, there are about twenty-seven. And private schools, there are about five and senior schools, there are about seven. The reason why when in terms of the numbers, as you can see there, honourable members, is that C S A has assisted us to find about three uh club uh uh clear, three hubs within uh uh Umko, there are situated in Um Kongunlovu, which are in located in Nodale, uh Sweet Waters and Imbali Hub. So that is why you see the escalation in terms of the numbers. And when it comes to the other districts, then the numbers then uh decrease. When it comes to Umsenyati, we've got nine in terms of the um the junior clubs and then two schools in terms of the primary schools, two when it comes to senior and then there is nine in terms of the private schools and the and the uh the senior teams as well. Utugeela, we've got about three junior clubs that are participating. Uh, four uh primary schools and then s- uh six senior schools and then there is none when it comes to the private schools. In Zululand, we've got nine when it comes to the junior and then eight when it comes to about uh primary schools, twelve uh when it comes to the senior schools and there is none. We I must comment that the these numbers are not uh when it comes to Zululand, we are mostly shining when it comes to Pongola. Uh whereby there we see even players that comes to represent our federation when it comes to C S A uh Cricket Weeks and that uh that is where we actually started when we were still receiving funding from the T S A and then there were issues that are there were that were here and there that actually uh uh made the situation for us to be difficult to proceed in terms of spreading into where we would actually like to spread. And then uh when we continue with with regards to our demographic targets, as I have said, we do all the ti- meet the targets when it comes to the uh uh C S A targets that has been set for us as the union. And then there are structures, so we do have structures in different districts uh in terms of the school structure, disability structure, women's structure, affiliated clubs and then fashioning leagues uh where we do have a fully uh reflecting numbers where we do have a structure is only in Herikuala and Um Kongunlovu and the rest of the other district that we serve where we are still on a development stage to make ensure that we do have structures that are functioning. It's the uh functioning of the disability structure and the women's structure. And then as the rest of us has been uh highlighting, that our challenge is still remains with the uh the facilities. When you come to the facilities, we still have a huge uh uh a very uh challenging crisis when it comes to facilities as even the municipalities are unable to assist us to ensure that this uh uh sporting code is introduced and well maintained when it comes to facilities, the uh facilities, they are mostly poor in all of the uh uh um uh places where we 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 serve. However, we do get the assistance of the schools here and there and only to find that in other schools, they've got concrete uh pitch of which it gives a minimal result in terms of the cra- type of cricket that we are looking for. And then where there is a tough uh pitch, it becomes another uh 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 crisis in terms of maintenance. It's not on the level where it can give a a shining star that we are looking for. However, we do accept uh the assistance and 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 the and the working in in the relationship with good relationship that we have when it comes to schools. And then when it comes to when it proceeds to the uh the skills development as well, um, we are heavily, we are a union that is heavily uh 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 reliance on C S A uh uh funding and also the government also to assist us here and there as well as as the fans, as like I said, that we are we are three years in 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 the office in terms of being uh recognized and as the affiliation stature. So we are in a very early stages. Some of the other things we are unable to self-sustain ourselves as as the union. As you will see there, the numbers in terms of what we can be able to offer is still at a very minimal stage. So in terms of the highlights, we've got Nandosuma who's who've been uh uh proudly represented us under at the C S A under nineteen and who has proceeded to receive the the Taskers um uh Taskers contracts, Tabison Leila who's in the academy and also received the collab to represent us in the T twenty and the four-day competition. Uh, we've got Sam Brown as well, who who who's in the academy, received the collab uh uh to represent our team in the one-day competition. And when it comes to our women, uh senior women, we've got over ninety percent of uh uh players that are coming from the hub system uh from these uh hubs that are uh we've highlighted uh which the hubs program is very much as assisting into ensuring that we do have in uh uh ladies that are coming through in terms of representing us in the game. And then uh also when it comes to our uh girls under nineteen, mostly when it comes to our uh uh under nineteen and under sixteen National Cricket Weeks uh uh programs, those girls that represent us, they come from these hubs that we've counted. We've got the the team, our professional team, which uh goes by the name of Taskers, uh of which we won last season alone, the three uh uh formats in Division Two, which is T twenty, uh one-day cup and also the four-day cup, which has given us an opportunity now to go represent um uh cricket in Division One, meaning that we're now going to receive an opportunity for our players to be looked at, to play for proteas, to compete with other um uh uh international players and also get for for more opportunity for our players to 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 represent the uh the the proteas coming from Kizeren. I must highlight uh honourable members and the colleagues that it is not entirely um a disadvantage for cricket to operate in two unions within our our province because of the vastness of our province. So in i- i- if we were to win order for pathway programs for each and every child coming from the grassroots to make it to the proteas, then it requires uh these provincial bodies to identify those players. Meaning if we've got one body, then which means we've got about fifteen or twelve players that are gonna be looked at to represent proteas coming from Kizeren. But if we've got two, then which means we've got thirty or twenty-four. Then meaning that, yes, in terms of we might be seen as the uh federation that wants to do things in their own way, but it's actually advantageous to us to ensure that we do have these runnings of having two federation. Uh but in in terms of the compliance of the province itself, we do comply by having structures that are operating within the geopolitical boundaries of the province, as the president has highlighted that. When it comes to the issues of representing Kizeren in the in the Sport Confederation meetings and issues that are there, we do have bodies that align each other. So we do talk to each other in terms of all the issues that are there within the province. But when it comes to trying to win the the access to the proteas, that's when we then separate the two uh provinces. And then uh also highlighting that the Taskers now is now going to play in the Division One together with the Dolphins. Meaning if I can just make in an example like uh the clubs when it comes to soccer. When it comes to Bafana Bafana, you will find that Bafana Bafana, the players that are come are coming, are playing for Bafana Bafana are identified to through clubs, which is your Deppen City, your Amazulu, your or your uh Parrot and so forth. But when it comes to cricket, it's through your provincial structures, meaning having two professional uh structures that are operating within our province, then it becomes advantageous to us and give more opportunities to the players coming through. And then when it comes to the challenges again, it is the issues of the facilities. It is the issues of the uh the access to the games because of its vastness, more especially in the uh in the in the in the in the districts that we operate in as the Kizeren inland. So as much as we may like to spread to the length that we we want as the union, which is operating in the inland point of view, but the challenges are 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 just too much. I think we really need a a a serious intervention to 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 spread the word to whoever gives the sports and recreation or the sports at the SAC department a budget to look into these things because we'll forever be at the back foot. The federation, they still need to catch up. As we know, the history of our federation, that it was previously dominated in a certain race group and now we want to introduce this uh uh sporting code in other uh uh outcast or 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 of the of our province. But we can't really reach into all corners if then the 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 budget of sport and uh of sport will forever be at the lowest point of its funding. I thank you.
Thank you very much. You can come in. Uh, thank you, um, Honorable Chairperson, M E C, H O D, um, Sports Confet President, uh Confet Members, uh the Portfolio Committee, um, Department of Sports Arts and Culture Representatives and then also my fellow federations. Um, on behalf of my president, Mr. Yunus Bobad, my Cricket Services Manager, Mr. Yasvir Singh, um, and then also our hub coordinator, Tobi Kontuli, and our N Y S coordinator, um, Zandile Mfeka. Um, thank you. Um, and we present this report. It's been shared with everybody. So I'm not gonna go into too much detail. Um, you have it. Um, and we've also shared a further document with all of you. Um, I'd like to start off by just thanking uh the Department of Sports Arts and Culture for supporting our dreams of creating a diverse, winning cricketing nation. Thank you for also for the opportunity to present today. Um, we are extremely proud of the progress we've made in all aspects. And we are currently also the reigning champions of the C S A Affiliate Scorecard. So I think it's something that Kizeren can be extremely proud of. Um. Our mission as the Kizer Cricket Union or the Hollywood Pet Dolphins franchise um goes both ways. The one is excellence and the other one is to make the game accessible to all. And we wanna combine these to basically achieve sustainable excellence. Um, for us, everything starts with governance and sound governance. We we've got five district committees uh in all the coastal regions of Kizeren. We've got five district committees in all the coastal regions of KZN, Ugu, Etikweni, Ilembi, Umkanya Kuri and Kingset Swaewu. Those districts then get representatives on our KZN C U Council. And that council then elects a democratic board consisting of independent and non-independent members that will then be part of governing our day-to-day business, but also creating the strategy that we then base our operations on. In terms of further governance items to just mention, we've got a transformation charter in place for our board. We've got a transformation committee with specific terms of reference that's appointed by the board as well. We've got a women's cricket committee that we put in place about two seasons ago to make sure that in the female space, we look after that entire pipeline. We report to the Department of Labor in terms of our employment equity submissions, P E certificate, and then also in terms of Cricket South Africa, Mother Body, there's specific targets in place for every single team that we put on the field. A minimum of six players out of the eleven, on the playing eleven must be players of color. And then something we're very proud of is our EPG scorecard. Our last rating was actually sixty-eight percent. So it's something that we've managed to achieve through many years of transforming the game. In terms of where it all starts for us, in terms of getting this diverse, winning cricket team, we want to create champion teams, but we also want to create champion people. We've got a broad base that starts off with our pipeline. And I don't know if the presentation can be shared or just be displayed as well. But we've got a broad base and it all starts for us with KFC Mini Cricket Program. It's been a very successful program that's been in place for almost forty years now. We've got about nine thousand kids part of this program in all five districts. We've got about two hundred and eighty-five primary schools, more than sixteen thousand players in that space. Hundred and thirty-eight secondary schools with more than eight thousand players in the secondary school space. And then in the coastal region, we've got ten hubs that we put in place. And we started this program in two thousand and seven. We've got hubs in Port Shepstone, Umm Zinto, Ink, the Ink area, which is in Nanda and Tzumma and Kwamashu, Umlazi, we've got a Chatsworth Reservoir Yields Outer West, which is the Amazdale area, Ilembi, Kingset Swaewu and Um Tuba Tuba. And these hubs were put in places where there's actually access for schools, for at least four schools, where they can actually walk to these facilities to make sure we eliminate a bit of the transport issue that we all have. In terms of managing these ten hubs, we've got forty-four permanent coaches and sixty-six people in total in the Cricket Services Department that looks after the space. Again, thank you to D SAC for making that possible and giving these coaches the opportunity to be full-time employed in those specific areas. We've also got a, we've also put a lot of emphasis on our club space. There's seventy-four junior clubs and seventy-nine senior clubs that run cricket throughout the coastal areas. And then most recently, we've added blind cricket, deaf cricket and intellectually impaired representatives on our KZN council, so we can get those voices heard as well. Our blind cricket and intellectually impaired teams, both of them have actually become national champions over the past season or two. So very proud of the way we've progressed. Then in terms of our female space, we've tried to mirror our programs in the men's space. That's been successful. We've tried to mirror that in the female space. And we've gone and made a fully professional female team two years ago. The first season, we actually won the national competition. In that professional women's team of ours, we've got, out of the fourteen squad members, we've got nine of them that came through our hub system and we're extremely proud of that. Also in the national, in the women's space, we've got two national, out of fifteen nationally contract players, two of those players come from Lindalani. So massive achievement for those ladies and we're extremely proud of them. Non Kululekum Laba, which you all probably heard about, she's also been the number two ranked, spin, or number two ranked bowler in the world. And at the recently held World Cup in the UAE, she actually took the most wickets in a World Cup ever taken by a Protea player. So I do think having a female from Lindalani go all the way and shine on the world space in cricket, which is a sport not necessarily ever sort of in the female space, to have one of our own go all the way, we're very proud of that. Just to mention as well, in the recently held World Cups for both men and female, we had three male representatives and three female representatives from KZN. And both those teams managed to reach the finals of those respective tournaments. In terms of further highlights, and it's on the slides that we also shared, and I mentioned it, in terms of the Cricket South Africa scorecard, they measure all our activities, all the way from governance, finance, development programs, professional programs. We're the reigning scorecard champions. In terms of our governance, we've achieved a hundred percent rating for the past three seasons. We've won eight senior franchise trophies in seven years. And we've created, we currently have ten national players. We've also got five SAA men's players, three SAA emerging players who's currently in Bangladesh, and also two SAA emerging ladies. I think why I'm mentioning all of this is bringing it back to the beginning, what we want to achieve. We want to achieve excellence while making the game accessible and diversifying everything we do. So through all our efforts to create a diverse, winning team, we've also seen the results. Our team, and a few years ago, our men's Dolphins team actually came up with the slogan, diversity is our strength and unity is our power. And I think it's something we've certainly realized in KZN. We've probably got some of the most diverse change rooms that you can find in world sport, whether it's football or rugby or cricket or whatever you look at anywhere in the world. I don't think you will find a more diverse change room that we currently have in our men's space. In terms of further professional highlights or performance highlights that we wanted to just mention, we've got about forty-four of our development players that's come through our hub systems, that's currently on bursaries at some of the main cricket-playing schools. So with that, we, through our programs, we've managed to keep a platform where these kids can then be identified. They can be given a proper education while they live this dream of actually, or chase this dream of actually becoming a professional cricketer as well or professional sports person. Like I mentioned, forty-four currently on these scholarships at different schools. We've also got various of our academy players and high-performance players on scholarships at various universities, UKZN has been helping us as well as ETA College. And through that, we've also had internships in the strength and conditioning space in terms of students becoming physios, et cetera. So we put a lot of emphasis on creating a broad base and then helping these people develop over the years, but then also to become champion people. And if they don't make it in cricket, they can actually still contribute to society in different ways. And we've obviously got so many different spheres in our business. We've got umpires, scorers, coaches, but then we've also got ground staff and curators at various different levels. So we've tried to create broad bases in all those aspects so that the elite can go on and actually reach their cricketing dreams. But if they do not do that, they will actually add value to society and different businesses. In terms of our national representation, we've got fourteen representative teams from under eleven all the way to under nineteen in the junior space. We've got under nineteen, our flagship teams are under nineteen boys and girls and under sixteen boys and girls. All four of those teams, three of them finished in the top three of the national tournaments. And our under sixteen girls actually went on to win the national competition the past season. Forty players representing these fourteen teams actually come through our hub system. So again, we've got vast opportunities for all the districts. And as they achieve and perform in those different hubs in the different districts, they will then get onto the KZN stage and then get onto the national stage. So we've got quite a nice, efficient pipeline. Yeah, and then I think another thing that we've managed to do the past season was to also get the National Youth Service in place. And we actually, and we've managed it from the office. And we've actually, we were actually announced as the winners in terms of that administration. Through that program, we've given a hundred and twenty job opportunities through the National Youth Service Initiative that's then incorporated at our hubs. In terms of the way forward, and I think I've harped enough on enough of these highlights, in terms of our way forward as well, we've designed a prototype where that we want to amplify the hub system. And we want to start off with Project Lindalani. Why Project Lindalani? In that space, we want to build a facility that would be an Astro-based facility. So you don't need machinery, you don't need all the heavy maintenance costs. You don't need water, you don't need all those elements that add cost to the bigger picture. Part of that would also be an indoor center where we can then actually train in the evenings under lights regardless of rain, regardless of the KZN weather. I think the KZN weather is a massive one for cricket as well with a lot of rain always. And so we want to try and eliminate that and keep, get the game to be played regardless. So Project Lindalani is something that we, we zooming all out. We've got a private sponsor on board as well and something. If it works, and we believe it can, we want to roll it out to the different hubs. In that space, it's also equipment. In terms of cricket, equipment is quite an expensive, quite an expensive part of it, but we've partnered with a lot of our schools. So those school kids then donate the equipment, which we then get back to our hubs. And those kids that can't afford it, but then also have access to proper equipment. Coaching is another element. We've got seven coaches permanently in that area. But we want to then just create those formal links where our provincial and franchise coaches then also reach out to the space. Yeah, I think finally, just from my point of view, the spirit of the KZN C U and Hollywood Beach Dolphins, we remain, we want to strive for excellence. We deeply rooted in our community and we want to keep rising together as champions on and off the field. And as I mentioned before, diversity is our strength and unity is our power. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I think that covers both the inland and the coastal in terms of the cricket. Honorable members, we are having an opportunity to discuss those two presentations, which is the Rappi Union presentation and also the Cricket Union presentation. I can take a hands if there are some takers from honorable members. Honorable Kohli, you are noted. Any other honorable member that want to input in the presentation? It seems as if it's only Honorable Kohli that want to input. Honorable Deputy Chairwoman.
Thank you very much, Acting Chair. And thank you to both the unions for your presentations. Mine is really just to appreciate the presentations because it's certainly giving us a much better understanding of how the federations work. But I'm going to bring back my, and I think it touches for both of the disciplines, the point that I made earlier on with regards to where you're feeding in from. Because both of these, and I see that in cricket specifically, you've had a lot of development that's come through from Lindalani, it's been mentioned here. But the recurring theme here is we're not going to achieve the transformation that we really want to see and give the opportunities to so many people if we don't get on top of the infrastructure issue. And I think that is something that the Portfolio Committee with the M E C really needs to put at the front and center of the agenda. Because we can have all the best programs in the world, but if we don't have infrastructure, and I like the idea of the Lindalani indoor center with its on AstroTurf because it certainly would, it would be a cheaper option than having a full field. But we're still going to miss out. And I think I saw on the rugby, specifically on the rugby one, I think I saw the amount of schools that were, the scholars that are made it to Craven Week. And they are all coming from former Model C schools, the bulk of them, not all of them. The bulk of them are coming from former Model C schools that do have facilities. So what are we doing for our rural schools? Do we need to sit down with the Department of Education and Public Works? I don't know, and get donated land from Public Works to facilitate, you know, development of sports facilities for schools and clubs? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Kohli. On my side also, I would love to appreciate both the presentation from the Rappi Union and also the Cricket Union. I think it assists us in terms of understanding what you are doing with the challenges that you are faced with, but there is something that you are doing. Initially, I ask the question in terms of the volunteer work because when we are posing some question, we want to pose question with the understanding that what we are doing, we are doing with the love of sport at heart. So we really appreciate that. Keep it up. We are not looking down upon the love of sport that you have and the investment that you are making to the future of this province in particular. Having said that, the question that I have raised to the president in terms of the alignment of your constitution, we would love to hear what are the plans in place in terms of the alignment of the constitution? I understand that the president was saying the SASC, it's accepting the way you are being working in terms of having the inland and also the coastal. I'm talking to the Cricket Union. But in terms of us as the province for the better management, I was listening when the inland was presenting, even your boards are not the same. So for us that are doing the oversight in terms of numbers, if I'm saying not the same, I'm talking to the numbers, they are not the same. For us that are doing the oversight, we would love to see that being aligned because this is the same cricket, we'll expect to see the boards that are the same even if you are two cricket. I understand maybe it's because of your branches that makes some boards bigger than other boards. But if it can be aligned, we will appreciate that. Also, what the chaplain in her opening remarks, in terms of expanding to the rural areas, to the deep rural areas, especially for the rugby and cricket. Yes, we can see the numbers, but the numbers are not convincing as per the population of those particular districts. If we can hear the feeling or also the challenges that you are facing in terms of expanding so that you have the representation in rural areas in particular because some of our young people are exposed in drugs, in substance, because there is nothing that they are doing. And we believe that it's only the sport that will be responsible in taking them away from those behaviors. If we can hear your contribution in terms of your expansion to the rural areas about the cricket and rugby and which are the sports that are really not having their fit on the deep rural areas. Because if you talk of Umm Zinyati, you will be talking about Dandi. You will be not talking about Umm Singa Ingut. So we want to hear what are the plans in place in terms of accommodating a person from Inluwati, Gwalabisa, to participate. We understand with the facilities, as you are indicating, the challenge with the facilities. But what other measures that you are putting in place in order to accommodate them so that we do not see what we are seeing in our young people, whether are the boys or the girls? Because it's only the sport that can bring the discipline in the young people. I think those are the contributions that we are putting forward to both the presentation, the cricket and the Rappi Union. Through you, HOD, you will... Through you, H O D, you will assist in terms of how are they going to respond?
Thank you, Honorable Chaperson. We appreciate once again the comments that the honourable members have given us. I think we really do note that these are enriching comments more than anything. But we will allow President to start. And then the federations will tackle those that are specific to the federations that have presented. I know there's an issue around the constitution. Mr. President, if you can just tackle that and then we'll move over to the federations.
Thank you, H O D. Thank you, Honorable Chair. Well, one man's meat is another man's poison. I concur with Sunny when she says that having two franchises enables the province to reach out to more and expose more talent for selection. That is very nice. But the dicey thing is that somebody mentioned in the House, I think one of the honourable members, that tomorrow's sofa will come back, also wanting the same criteria to be utilized to them. As I'm saying that currently, we are sitting on two federations that are in that space. Also, it's an issue which can be resolved by SASCOC, as I mentioned earlier, where I think they are hesitant. I was listening there because I'm new. I said I can answer some questions next year. But I think that SASCOC will need to be decisive, because there are many other grey areas that exploit the issue of SASCOC not being decisive. For an example, whilst one, some federations, because what is happening here in K Z N, it's happening also at a bigger scale in other provinces. I'll make a mention like rugby. With us, we are fine, rugby is compliant. But Saru has got fourteen provinces of rugby, which means that in some other provinces, they have got more than one rugby union. Same thing with athletics. We are fine here in K Z N, we've got only one federation of athletics. But Cricket South Africa is recognizing seventeen provinces of athletics. Now, that damage that is happening in other provinces will gradually creep into our province too. So that's why that sometimes it's better to deal with the issue when it is still far off, before you wait, it is in your house. So, but as I said, sometimes what we can see as a disadvantage to another person might be an advantage and vice versa. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Honorable Chaperson. I think the next one came from both honourable members and it was expansion. Maybe, see, oh, you can just talk to that, we'll see. Other than drawing from Ellen Delaney, you know, expanding to the deep, deep rural areas, the plan. And I suppose rugby can also comment on that on the same. And then we'll come back on the infrastructure, the department. Thank you, honourable members.
Thank you, H O D. Yeah, maybe just a quick note on the constitution one. I do think we have to have our mother body probably around the table. And I think to have that engagement with Cricket South Africa as well, because it was a C S A directive to say, we get two affiliates in place in K Z N. So I think that conversation, I think we have to have it with C S A. And I mean, we're more than willing to engage and see how we can resolve that. Yeah, in terms of the expansion, and I think back to the comment made earlier around infrastructure, I think that's probably the biggest, the biggest challenge we have throughout. We currently, in a coastal, from a coastal point of view, we've got ten hubs in place. And as I mentioned earlier, it's in all five districts. So if we can somehow get the tools to just amplify what we're already doing in those spaces. I know the department has also built some facilities. But I do think if we can integrate those projects a bit better and almost say, okay, where is your hub currently and how do we actually go and invest there? We already have coaches in place, which we are paying full time. We've got district committees in place. And I think the one thing, when we developed this prototype as well, for any cricketer to make it, there's three basics that you have to have. And it's facility, access to facilities, it's equipment and it's proper coaching. So we've ticked the coaching box and from an equipment point of view, we've made a lot of plans through partners. But the facilities one becomes a huge sort of issue for us. And I do think if we can somehow maybe identify these hubs and we can present to you to say, guys, if we can, there's our hubs, if we can elevate this facility with some cricket nets or some basics, then we can amplify those programmes and then we can really say it's accessible to all. As it currently stands, we're making use of diversity programme where we identify, we've got a great talent identification programme. And then those kids, and I think rugby's probably got the similar model, where you identify those kids from the rural, rural areas and you actually get them versaries into mainstream schools where they then have access to those proper facilities. And I think if we can create more of those facilities where we're actually in the rural areas and also facilities that the unions can actually play a role in the maintenance part of it. Even in Etikweni, we probably on a weekend, we can use about a hundred different facilities. But we've had to move towards schools and partnering with schools, because some of the municipal facilities have just gone so far backwards. We want to spread the game to females, but they pitch up at fields where there's no change rooms. So all those different elements, they are items that we have to address. And we've had various meetings with our own parks in the Etikweni region. But I think the same should go for all eleven districts and see how we can channel those funding and make it a more integrated approach to actually make those facilities, to get them to an acceptable level where it's also safe. And I do think to eliminate a lot of the vandalism and those types of things that's also happened over the years. And I think Covid was probably a big catalyst where we lost a lot of facilities because it stood still for a year or two and people just came and took over, vandalised some of it. And unfortunately, to get that back to where it should be, it's a very difficult exercise. So infrastructure is probably the number one item on that list.
I would just like to add on two things. When it comes to also going to the deep rural areas, I must say that there is something that is happening there, but it's at a very elementary stage when it comes to mini cricket. Because, simply because mini cricket is an elementary stage whereby it just needs an open space for any kid to take part when it comes to playing cricket. But as it goes to a more advanced stages, then that is where it becomes difficult for a federation to ensure that the kids graduate from mini cricket to hardball. You will find that we've got so many primary schools that are there, we've got so many coaches that are being trained on mini cricket in order to provide the basic of the sporting code. However, when it comes to the advanced stage, like to play for hardball, then it's need a specialised surface, which is a safe environment for our players to take part in. And as you can hear, the word hardball, the nature of the equipment that we use becomes dangerous to just play in any surface. And then again, we've partnered with corporate sector companies like Hollywood Betts, of which they are assisting us in terms of building cricket nets, to say that while we are being delayed by trying to source out funding, but the minimum that they can have through their C S I programmes, they do partner with us into ensuring that we build at least cricket nets for our kids to graduate from mini cricket. Otherwise, we'll forever have cricket being played at an elementary stages in primary schools. But when it comes to high schools, then it disappears. So we've just highlighted the successes through the kids who have made it through against all those obstacles and all odds. But it doesn't mean that when it comes to our deepest rural areas, there is nothing that is happening. There is something that is there, but it's unable to advance to other stages simply because of the limitations that we are faced with as the federation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ngonya, you had not responded.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I think, just not to repeat what Cricket, not to repeat what Cricket have said, because we use almost the same model when it comes to transformation and development, where they have the hub system and we have the hotspot system. I think, but it's true that you can't just concentrate on your semi peri urban areas, must also look at the deep rural areas. I think the challenge there is in respect of the model that we use, cases for schools that are at a fairly close distance to each other. Because once you've coached and you've trained them, then they have to play a league, a hotspot league. And the hotspots, the way that they work is that we identify schools that are fairly close to each other so that they can be able to then play a mini league amongst each other and then a cross hotspot league. I think in the deep rural areas, it just needs more ingenuity as to how we go about doing it because of some of the distances as well between the schools. Because you need similar level primary schools being a part of the same hotspot and the high schools as well. It just needs us as a federation to come up with an ingenious way to actually get it started. Because once you get it started, that is when you can even identify other problems that you have not identified. Or maybe you might identify things are actually working that you did not foresee. Like the commitment I can give to the portfolio committee is that I am going to take it back to our council and I'm going to take it back to the office. And then for us to think out of the box, to actually get it started. Because if it doesn't get started, we're going to be here again next year and not reporting anything that's taking place there.
Thank you very much. Okay, I want to firstly apologise the colleagues and the honourable, the M E C. I think perhaps I was supposed to say this before we started. As you would know, Honorable M E C, that our meetings are public. So the media and the people at large are able to access our meetings. So our meetings are live. Perhaps I was supposed to give you that heads up before we started. My apologies for doing that now. So I just stepped out for one of the media interviews. So what we're doing is not only for us and it is also for the people of Gwazulu-Natalis they are watching from home to see that we are working, we are doing what we are supposed to do as the committee. We are doing the oversight as we're supposed to do it. Perhaps I was supposed to tell you that before we started. I am sorry. Honorable Mavimbela, thank you very much for stepping in while I was out. I don't know, if honourable members have raised some of the issues that I want to raise on particularly cricket and rugby, then you would say that you have already responded to that because I have stepped out. My challenge, my biggest challenge with the presentation of cricket is one. I don't think that there is a fair representation as far as gender is concerned. In your ex-co, I think you have five and you only have one woman. Federation Office Administration that is full time, the total is one hundred and six, and only twenty-one women. Technical officials out of sixty-eight, you only have six females. Junior team selectors, now this is where, okay. I understand that some of these, some of these jobs you'd give to people who are skilled and qualify for those particular positions. But I'm here wondering what skills and what, what skills and what knowledge would one need to be able to be a junior team selector? If the issue is skills, maskillzanjan la oktua kampela ya shota, and women do not have those skills. Junior team selectors out of sixty, you only have fifty women. There are many, as you have counted. And that's, I think that's my main problem as we are speaking about transformation. And of course, I'm not expecting, I'm not expecting people who are representing cricket to come here and be defensive. Because when you speak about transformation, Honorable M E C, it's where you say there are challenges here. And how can we move from these challenges that we have? And I would not want them or you colleagues to be defensive about it. I would not want you to think that perhaps it's an attack, because this is our first of many meetings that we're still going to have. And this meeting is meant to be a constructive one. It's meant to be a meeting that identifies gaps and we all find a way of dealing with those gaps. There is a serious gap in cricket as far as gender parity is concerned. And I think that something can be done there. I think the gap is just too wide for me. I don't know, honourable members, if you have noticed in the presentation that was given, the gap is just too wide and I think something can be done. It's so wide from your ex-co to the last junior employee. And I think we must be able to correct that. And also on challenges, it is cited that, and I think, Honorable M E C, maybe because in your capacity as the M E C, perhaps it is going to be important that the department engages municipalities where there are facilities that have been neglected. Because it has been said that there are facilities that have been neglected and people find themselves not being able to utilise them. Players and even spectators find themselves not being able to utilise them because they've not been taken care of, they've not been given the attention by the municipalities. So in your capacity, Honorable M E C, I want to play with you to engage these municipalities. And maybe through the department channels, we first find out, of course, working with the rugby team, I mean with the cricket team, we first find out which municipalities are those. Because in this report, they are not specific on which municipalities are those, where you have facilities, honourable members. But they can't use those facilities because the municipalities have not been maintaining those facilities. There is no ablution facilities. I think that while we complain... Eh, I, I think that while we complain that we don't have enough facilities, but the facilities that are already there need to be utilized so that we can be eh able to eh at least move forward with the transformation that we are speaking about today. Eh, as far as rugby is concerned, I don't think I have um eh many eh, eh things to say eh except, except to say eh, I, I think it needs to be strengthened. The relationship between eh the, 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 the rugby union and the municipalities, I think it needs to be eh strengthened eh because as we have said before when we were engaging with the eh department's report eh earlier to say, municipalities have the capacity and the right to actually build these facilities. So it's just a partner, eh, eh, eh partnership eh, we just need to do some things at a partnership level. And um, the, the, there is where Mr. Ngonya speaks about eh, eh, transporting players. I'm not sure if we're transporting players eh maybe from, from eh townships to Kings Park or eh, or, or what happens there. But there is where you speak about eh unsafe vehicles, unsafe, unsafe travel vehicles eh for transporting players. I don't know if, I'm sure you will remember that, it's in your, in your presentation eh where you speak about transporting eh players. It's in eh, it's in your report, I'm just not sure which slide it is. Eh, maybe if we can ju- if I can just eh quickly check it, I will find it. It's on slide eh, is it eleven? No, but, 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 but there is where you speak about the issue of unsafe vehicles. So I want to understand how unsafe are they and, and what makes them unsafe? And what is it that the rugby union eh does to correct that? Because you cannot um, you cannot transport eh people that eh you have scouted for eh people that you're trying to help eh play rugby eh on unsafe vehicles. I think you will see it in your report, it's there. Otherwise eh, I think officially as the committee would eh like to congratulate eh eh the Sharks eh on eh making it to the semifinals of eh eh, what is it called? Union United Rugby Championship. And eh, we heard that they are playing with the Bulls eh this coming weekend, wish them all the best. I think eh that is, that, that is all from me eh, maybe I can just give you to respond. It's on slide nine, the issue of eh unsafe vehicles on slide nine, thank you.
Um, so for cricket, I think the um regarding the representation of, of females um or lack of representation um, it's duly noted. I do think we, we've done quite a lot if we compare it to where we were, but I do think there's a lot to get where we should be going. Um, like I mentioned in my presentation, we wanna mirror, we wanna try and mirror what we do in the men's space for the females as well. Um, and we've managed to achieve quite a lot i- i- in that, but like I mentioned, we still got a long way to go. Um, the other item we still need to zoom in on as well, um, and it was highlighted by our E P G report as well is, is people with disabilities. Um, we don't have any on our, our board and, and also not in our staff. So that's another area where we have to improve. Um, just a mention on, in terms of the senior team selectors, junior team selectors, those numbers, we've tried to specifically get females involved in the female space. Um, in our junior teams, for instance, we've only got two hundred and thirteen girls' teams um where we've got two hundred and eleven boys, two hundred and twelve boys, two hundred and thirteen boys' teams. So we've got sixty, six boys' teams and only two girls' teams in that eh primary school space. Um, where, and, and that would sort of give you the number of forty-five male selectors versus fifteen female selectors. But I do think um, like you mentioned in some of the other spaces, it's, it's an area which we, which we're working on. Um, if we compare it to where we were five years ago, we've made progress, um, but it's still not enough. So duly noted.
Um, thank you, Honorable Chair. Um, we, we have definitely together with, with my G M have noted the issue of strengthening the partnership with the municipalities eh in ensuring that, that the issue of, of, of facilities and, and, and availability is, is, is reduced or taken care of. Now, in respect of um, um, the, the, the transportation of place, it is something that um, even though the union, the federation itself doesn't contract with um, with the various transport um, um modes, it is left to the clubs. It is something that has been noted by some of the, the districts and some of the, of, some of the clubs that it is sometimes the mode of the transportation of players which is, will be um a buggy. Um, sometimes it will be the quality um of, of, of the actual um taxi that it is because we rely on taxis quite a lot. Um, eh, it is, it has been, it has been something that has been, it has been something that has been noted in respect of the quality sometimes. And I think the quality also goes towards will be influenced up at the quotation that you will get for that particular day. Um, it is something that, that, that has been noted and something that, that, that has been said. However, we, however, we are, we are not involved in, 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 in actually, in, in doing that. But what the federation has the responsibility to do is to, is to ensure that all our clubs look after their, look after the well-being of their players. Maybe the federation now needs to, needs to have a policy in place in respect, in this, in respect of transportation as to eh, eh to say, this is the poli- this is the policy, this is the minimum that is required to ensure the safety of, of the players because we ultimately bear the responsibility.
Thank you very much eh, honorable members, are we fine? Can we proceed? Thank you. Eh, we now proceed to the presentation on transformation in K Z N Swimming by K Z N Aquatics.
Okay, good afternoon, um, honorable members, all protocol absorbed. Thank you for the opportunity to present the transformation status of K Z N Aquatics. So just some background on K Z N Aquatics, we, K Z N Aquatics looks after.
You can just try to speak up, but if you can just try to speak up, please.
Okay, noted. So K Z N Aquatics is responsible for swimming, open water swimming, diving, artistic swimming and water polo within the province. Um, our head office location is Kings Park Pool, although at the moment it's, it's closed due to renovations as they replacing the roof, um, it is a leased facility. So to comment on the slides based, uh, slides three and four, which is, which shows our demographics. Um, as it is currently, we are under administrators, eh administration. So the stats that were used for the demographic slide is based on the administration, which is broken down in table four. Um, so obviously there isn't much transformation with regards to the administration team, but there are three females who make up the operations team. Okay, slides five indicates our technical eh capacity. Um, we've got a broad diversity of coaches, officials and selectors um which were active, very active twenty-two, twenty-three with a good, also good eh gender balance. And there's a lot of youth participation. So slides six to eight speaks to our schools, S A schools' performance. The schools' programs are critical at the, at the grassroots level for development. Our K Z N team had near equal gender split and included seven eh para athletes. The management team was also racially diverse and the team managed to secure second place overall at S A schools. Slides nine to ten are on eh schools' diving. They show participation amongst eh black and colored youth in diving, which is also been increasing year on year. The development also saw expanded representation and, and middle ones across multiple race groups, which also shows progress in the vasic, diversifying historically exclusive codes. So it's like, with regard to slides eleven and twelve eh what um, in terms of access and structures, we've got school structures which are active in ten of the eleven districts and um just formal district eh, district administrative structures only active in seven, um, which does lead to a blind spot for where the, where we don't have district structures, which are M Tanya Kuda, Hariguala, Umse Yati and Amajuba. Okay, in terms of playing facilities, um, we also have, it's also a challenge for us, especially in the, the rural areas. Um, and also eh, so Kings Park is our main facility where we host our national and provincial events. So having it closed also has created logistical challenges and also the loss of hosting some of the national competitions because as much as we've made an arrangement to use Rachel Finless and eh, the, the capacity of the venues are vastly different. On slide sixteen, with regards to skills development, we've managed to cha- train over twelve, twelve hundred individuals in officiating, coaching eh and safeguarding as well as other specialized workshops, which supports both job creation and skills development. There's some of the performance highlights for our summers in terms of their national and international participation. They've managed to, to win hundred and eighty medals in total across the different national and international events. Um, water polo is also starting to show some diversification, although there's still a lot of eh room for improvement. From slides nineteen to twenty-six, those highlight the master participation program that we've managed to run during last season. Um, with, with mostly within eh, with partnership with Swimming South Africa, eh the relevant municipalities and K Z N KESAC. Our main or bigger program was the Etuqueni Schools Program, which is run in partnership with Etuqueni Municipality where we manage instructors over a period from February to April, over a three-month period using the municipal pools. We trained about two thousand, just over two thousand learners from eh various schools that are based around the municipal pools. Um, some of the other programs that were run in rural areas was one that was in, in Burgville Ladies Smith that was ran, that ran at Woodstock Dam. And there was another one in Um Gungunlovu that ran at Midmore Dam. So it does create some job eh creation opportunities, but they're only temporary for the duration of the program. Okay, so slides twenty-eight to thirty-two, they deal with the governance and obviously the governance challenges. Um, there is eh some notes on the administration to say what's been accomplished so far. And there is a plan because one of the critical things in terms of getting us compliant again is in terms of completing our audits and getting our financials signed off. So that there is a detailed plan eh on slide thirty and thirty-one. Um, yeah, so we've also had eh, yeah, so that details those. So yeah, just to, in closing, look, we have made some progress um and there are some achievements in like training and, and running programs, but there is still a lot that needs to be improved, especially on governance and running more programs within rural areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, you are very soft spoken, so I didn't even realize when you were done. I'm sorry. Can we move to the next presentation, Tennis?
Good afternoon, can you hear me? Good afternoon, Honorable Chair. Uh, thank you for giving Tennis the opportunity to be here today. Um, I'm here with one of my eh council members eh from our K Z N Committee. Um, I'll just take us through the slides quickly. Um, eh, we are K Z N Tennis Federation and we cover tennis, wheelchair, schools, coaches, masters tennis and of course eh technical officials. Our, our headquarters eh is at Westridge Park. And whilst we're there, I think I just should um, should explain that the, the stadium is under threat at the moment because of eh, there's a court case actually happening today that um eh, if, if that court, court case doesn't restore the income stream to Tennis, um eh, we could lose Tennis in K Z N, K Z N. Uh, because at the moment um, the Etuqueni Tennis Association who um, who had, eh, I don't know if anybody knows, the, the advert that was eh on the freeway, that was taken away from us from, by the eh council. And eh, at the moment, the, the Tennis Federation that sees to the upkeep of those lovely courts that we've got there is, is really battling. And um, so if the court case doesn't go well for our service provider today, um eh, we could be, we could be under severe threat. I just wanted to bring that in to eh, to let everybody know. Okay, the, the prop, the Westridge Park Tennis Stadium is leased through the Etuqueni Tennis Association. Uh, there are all our, all our eh details there. The, the next three slides, I think, are figures that I'd like to, I'd like to address on the demo, demographic targets. Um, the eh slide that is the colorful slide that is um there. Um, just, just to point out that we, we have, we don't have eh a board or anything like that. We just have an eh, um, a Tennis eh Executive Committee consisting of a president, all right? Our ex-co members, we have nine, our, and eh, the, the, the numbers are there. But eh, of the nine people, um eh, you can see the, the, the representation, representation there. Thirty-three percent are black and fifty, fif- fifty-six percent are people of color. Under our o- office administration, we only have one staff and eh, that is a secretary or treasurer and that's the only person we employ. And she is eh a full-time employee, of employee. On the coaches' side, we have sixty coaches. Eh, fifteen percent of those are black and twenty-five percent of those are people of color. Eh, technical official, officials, we have fourteen. Twenty-two percent of those are black and thirty-six percent of those are of color. Our senior selectors, um eh, are the, the senior selectors, there are six. Eh, and again, twenty-two percent of them. Sorry, seventeen percent of them are, are black and of course. sorry, seventeen percent of them are black and of course, twenty percent of those are people of color. Junior team selectors, junior team selectors, they are no black, but twenty-five percent of those are color. Senior team managers, there are none. Junior team managers, there are five, of which forty percent are African and sixty percent are of color. Right, the composition of our teams, the under thirteen team, there are twelve in our under thirteen teams that contest our inter-provincial, our schools teams. Again, eight percent are African and thirty-three percent are people of color or juniors of color. The under nineteen male team, there are twenty-four, thirteen are African and fifty percent are people of color. Our male senior team, seventeen of those and twenty-four percent of those are black and forty-one percent are of color. On the female side, we've got twelve under thirteens, twenty-five percent are African and thirty-three, sorry, forty-two percent are of color. Under nineteen team, twenty-four in the team, thirteen percent are African and thirty-three percent are of color. And of course, the senior ladies team, seventeen members and twenty-four are African and the same percentage of color. Going back to schools, that is the previous slide. I just wanted to do that one next. As you can see, we've got participating schools there in Etuqueni. There are, excuse me, there are twenty-seven primary schools and twenty-eight senior schools. Amajuba, five and five. Ilenbe, six and five. Hariguala, four primary schools and two senior schools. Ugu, seven and five. Ungungunlovo, eighteen schools, eighteen primary schools and ten high schools. Umkhanyekuda, three primary schools. Umsenyati, five and one. Utukela, six and two. And King Setwio, eight and seven. And of course, Zululand, four and two. Sorry, talking to district structures in Amajuba. In Amajuba, we have a school structure and a disability structure. All right, in Etuqueni, we have a district structure and school structure, disability structure and eighteen affiliated clubs. Ilenbe, we have one affiliated club. King Setwio, we have disability structure and a woman's, sorry, and three affiliated clubs and two schools leagues, mainly schools leagues. Sorry, I think I forgot, in Etuqueni, you've got ten functional leagues in Etuqueni. In Ugu, we have a structure, we have four affiliated clubs and one functional league. Ungungunlovo, we've got structure, we've got a school structure, three affiliated clubs and three functional leagues. Those as well are school leagues. And Umsenyati, we have a school structure and two functional junior school leagues. And Utukela, we have a disability structure. And in Zululand, we have nothing at the moment. All right, just talking about facilities, I will just talk about federation-owned or leased facilities. Amajuba, we have one and the structures condition is poor. Etuqueni, we have fifteen and the facilities are normally good. Our competing facility is Westridge Park. And again, we just say that most of our competitive tennis or our tournaments will have to stop if we lose Westridge Park. Hariguala, we have one facility there, but the conditions are poor. And King Setwio, the condition of the facilities there range from fair to poor, as well as the force facilities in Ugu. Ungungunlovo as well, there are three there and they're mainly good. Umkhanyekuda, we have nothing. Umsenyati, we have one, the facility is poor. And of course, Zululand, one and the facility is poor. Just taking you through the barriers and challenges. Tennis is not, is a team sport and therefore doesn't have wide appeal. Tennis is an expensive sport because you need lots of equipment. That's not only for the athletes, but that is for the facility itself. Another big barrier is that most of our clubs at the moment are on short-term leases. And this in itself creates problems where it curtails investments and it will, you know, your membership drops in the club. We find difficulties with administrators or getting administrators. The lack of funding for players to compete at the next level is a problem. And the maintenance of clubs is for the account of the club itself as we get no assistance from municipalities. And this drives up costs, costs to the club. I'll just go on to the highlights, the performance highlights again. On the performance side, Caitlin Ramdeth is one of our juniors that came through our schools program, is now at Poch Academy and has been selected for the South African Bully Jean King Club Team just recently. There's a picture of her and the team on the next slide. Sia Bonge Jaka, now this young athlete, we've got, he is from our hub at Westridge Park as well. It's a hub that's been running since 2019. And it's one of the most successful hubs in our province. And he's been, he's, sorry, did I mention Sia Bonge Jaka?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, he was headhunted by the Harris Academy in the Cape. And so he's there now and he's been there for the past three years. Sia Bonge, Connor Deutsch and John Botma were all selected for the South African under sixteen junior Davis Cup team just recently. Alwanda Skosana won the first African Paralympics Games in Ghana in 2023. Simpeywe Ngwenya, also from the same hub and also from the same period of time. He, excuse me, he's made the SA squad for selection. He's played for a team in the US. And he's played in Egypt and he has now been selected for the team to go to Namibia in the future. Lindo Gwenzah and Sipalela Nzama and Sophie Camily have also been, they are being selected, they have been selected for the SA School Squad. Just to let you know that Lindo and Sipalela are both on scholarships. Lindo is on a scholarship afforded by Westful Boys and Sipalela is on a scholarship from the Department of Sport. So thank you very much for that. Munash Tiburu and Nkosi Gumele, they were both from the same Westridge hub, have now qualified as a Level One coach and a place tennis coach, so there's some progression for them. Tiburu and Ngwenya were in the Bellevue team, the Bellevue team, sorry, that won the, that recently won the KZD leg of the National Junior Champs. And they will compete for the national honor in, as, and to be the national club champs at Sun City soon. The newly formed Westridge Park Tennis Club, and again, that is from the hub that we have at Westridge Park, were placed second in the B section of the Club Champs. So it was very well, it was very well done to them. Amshlali Plepp won the top boys' primary schools nationally in 2024. Westful Boys won the top high schools' boys' National Kuzny College Festival in 2024. Our under nineteen provincial schools team had a podium finish in 2024 and 2025. Senior athletes Bruce Young and Letika Fenta have won the mixed fifty-plus ITF three consecutive years in a row in the Cape. Connor Deutsch is currently playing international junior tennis at Roland-Gros. He's, he played in the junior qualifying round. He won his first round match, but was unfortunately knocked out in the second qualifying round. We host many national tournaments, which include under eighteen ITF tournaments at Westridge Park and at Kuro School. And we've done so for the last three consecutive years. We manage a successful Westridge Park Development Hub and that's been going for many years now. And we have a thriving Lollipop Series grassroots level program for under elevens since 2019. The next slide just has pictures of our Davis Cup team and Simpeywe and Ramdeth in the US and of course, our KZD Championship Games, our selected squad for the school squad and the the winners of the Winter Games, the schools' section of the Winter Games last year. Okay, just the next slide is just a breakdown of our participation in the, in the participation of our athletes internationally, in international teams. I must just apologize, I don't think this slide made the final presentation. But I must just apologize, somebody added a K to bricks and that shouldn't be there. So it's just Caitlin Ramdeth, Sophia Singh and Leah Dubey that competed internationally for us. And of course, Kai Forvik, Connor Deutsch, John Botma, Simpeywe Ngwenya and Sia Bonge and Jaka. They competed internationally for us. Just going on to our challenges, as I, as I did mention, Westridge Park is under threat and we need some support from the municipality there. Our other challenge is women in tennis. We find it difficult to keep girls in tennis at high school. There is a significant drop in women's, in girls at that stage, which causes our clubs to have less ladies in the clubs. And of course, this means there's less officials and less females managing, in management positions. We think that establishing females' events or women's-only events would sort this out. And of course, tennis in rural areas, we need to find a way to work with district sports offices to locate rural tennis facilities unknown to us, especially those where tennis clubs could currently exist. The vastness of the province is difficult for a small federation to manage without support from the district. Thank you, Madam, Honorable Chair.
Thank you very much, honorable members. Those are the two presentations that we just received for requests that want to engage on the transformation of KZD and swimming and as well as transformation in Guazuru Natal tennis. Honorable Mavimbela, is that the only hand, honorable members, or I should give you a breather? Okay, Honorable Mavimbela for now.
Thank you very much, Chair. We also welcome the presentation that has been made in terms of the aquatic and also the tennis sport codes. We really appreciate the presentation. Chair, I think I must start with the words that were said by our founding president of democracy, Honorable Otatu Mandela, where he once said, "Sport has the power to change the world. It has the power to inspire. It has the power to unite people in a way that little else does. Sport can create hope where there is only despair." I am quoting these words, Chair, taken from your opening remarks, when you were outlining the purpose of this meeting, when you were clear in saying, "We are having this meeting to deal with transformation." Because some of the sport codes were referred to some, not all of us. And they were discriminatory in their, in how they've been structured. I'm reminded of this word, Chair, when I am looking at the very two presentations that have been made. Because it starts with the management going down to the athletes, how it goes down to the rural areas where you were referring to. I don't want to take away what the MVC said at the beginning, that the management that is before us, it's their love of sport, they are volunteering their services. But as much as they are volunteering their services, you were clear, Chair, that they have got the responsibility. And that responsibility, we want to see it attracting and also opening up for all our rural districts. If you are looking at the looking at the districts that are participating in, in swimming, you, you can see that the program, uh HOD that you have started, instead, i- 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 in terms of capping the, the drowning, it's failing. If in Umkanya Gude, there is nothing that is happening there. So it means that program, it, it, it's no longer continuing. And also in Herigwala, because those are the challenges that you are experiencing in terms of the, the drowning. Uh we are putting uh to this leadership that they need to lend the hand and make sure that they do accommodate and they expand to the rural areas in particular, so that all the districts are participating. And it's, it, it's so worrying when you are looking at the table that have been presented, where you have your primary school participating, then there is no further uh program that is going on. So it means that particular young person who was participating at the early ages, it's nowhere to continue. Because it's not only all the learners that will be going to universities, having their professionals as uh doctors and whatsoever, some will leave with the sport. But in terms of how the management are willing, and it's also worrisome. I think Honorable Nkosi was also raising some of the challenges that the aquatic, they, they, they have in terms of them losing the funding due to the non-compliance. And really, we cannot take that uh as, as if it's, it's good to lose the funding because of the non-compliance. As much as we understand that they do have the administrator and the HOD was clear in terms of the working hand and glove with the administrator. But the poor management, also ofa lele yese ivule la mello kakulu ngoba kushukuti, ice netis. Uh the, the, the capacity constraints, tho- those capacity constraints, they also had an impact uh going down to those that are supposed to be benefiting uh i- 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 in, in the very same program. Uh I, 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 I think that, that we cannot take it very lightly. When, when, when the president was making the, the presentation, he was clear that in terms of the infrastructure or the resources that you will need for the tennis, there is not much that you will need. So you will expect that in each and every district, so this uh code will be fully functional. There will be nowhere where you are having some challenges that it, it is not happening because you do not need much for, for them to compete. So we are pleading with the management that they lend the head so that our youngsters are given the opportunity. But they must start within, as much as they are volunteering their services, but they have the responsibility. Ugothi, when you are nyingaling, there is somebody that you must also lift his or her hand. Ngoba kushukuti, umakpe la nina, kuzo bepe la, geksa sala bandua na bedu. So we are pleading for that. We want to see the management, which is also equivalent to the population dynamics of this province. Because we cannot have a situation where you have a sport code which is just dominated by one race. We are a non-racial uh province, non-racial country. We want to see that diversity in all the sporting codes. So we are pleading that you all lend the hand so that you have uh everyone participating. I'm, I'm not underestimating the work that we are doing, but we want to hear at least how much you have extended your programs so that you accommodate everyone and anyone to participate in these programs. Thank you, Chair.
No, thanks very much, um Honorable Mavimbela. Is any hand? Oh, Honorable Nkosi?
No, thank you very much, uh Chair. Uh uh we welcome the report of, of the presentation, Wala Mayama. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a sport code. But Chair, I'm worried, Galley, Galley called the KZN Aquatics Swimming. I, I, I'm not sure whether uh minister who was representing it is the member of uh that board or is a member of that sport uh court because in this presentation, kuningo okpaliwe, even in the report of uh department, kuningo kuliwi ngali, ngali, ngali sport codes saga swimming. So getting such short uh presentation, we, we, we sport codes is na, is na my issues. Uh we are trying to say, uko, noksamele wenziu, when it comes to this uh sport codes saga swimming, uh Honorable MEC and HOD. Um Honorable Mavimbela, kusaktintile, ogunye benfesho, ebenfesho, kujule, sokuuti, even we, i- i- in their demographics, uh you can see, ugothi, there is only one race that is more dominating that. We, we, we we, like, Emma Officer Naabo, from exco management to your junior staff. Uh there are less Indians, less colored, no, not even one colored. Uh it's only one uh African that is there. Nakwana there, down which, uko, juni. And um there is um, a, a racist case that uh we received from this uh sport code. Uh it's, it's okay, this year in Glenwood uh primary school and it was attended, but I, I agree, ugothi, my attendua, it is na, i- 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 pelap. So we are to say, ugothi, from president to board members, yes, there are, there is one black uh person who was there. And then there are, there are cases of um races and head speeches that took place in Glenwood uh primary school, as much as uh ipo ti iti, ngoba agwenzaga langa, ngapagaati, uh where, basta benzela kona, they are not attending that case. So I think, kuningo ksa funa, kukusondele, lewetuze, kule, kule, kule sport codes, slalo ngoba. Kwama Yamasport Code, we did receive him, my presentation, si beraiti, siabono, uko, tiga se changewa. And then you find his sport code, u, u, ugothi, uthe the under administration, if mozuwe gal. If they are under administrationi, kwabo nababuka, kaba ngai misel, uko, tibe kondisi, ekwezabo, be lungi ise, lago nagele kwan. Uh I, I hope, Chair, ugothi, umaslangana naabo, kuzo beseku right, beguazu, u, u, ugothi, bese benzela gal. Be, bese benzo, ngokbambi sana, benzo, nyo msa benzo, right, it's disturbing, but yeah, ngawa ngaku, eh slalo.
Thanks, Honorable Nkosi. Do we have any other, uh Honorable Colly, Honorable Simang?
No, thanks, Chairperson. Uh I'll be very, um short, um won't take long. The tennis courts, what is a problem, what is a program of using them, especially in townships? Uh because you, you, you find them that are not being used. Sometimes you find boys now playing soccer there because it's like a wild elephant. Um especially in townships and uh, but you can see in the areas like Westville, they are using it. What's a program on that?
Thank you, Chair. Um Man is also on, on tennis and I'm not sure if, if we will be able to receive the answer here or not. Um but with regards, you did um speak very briefly about Westridge Stadium. And I just, I'm not sure if we are able, I know you did say that there is a court case that is, it's taking place today. Um I had heard about it and that there was a possibility of losing the premises. Um and I'm not sure if I've understood correctly or incorrectly. Um but the concern that I have is, it states here that it's leased through Etikwene Tennis Association. So who is, uh I don't know who owns it, if that is, if it's the municipality, if it's privately owned. Uh because there's no way that we'd be able to come together and, and find funds to build a facility like that. Thank you.
Uh thank you very much, uh Honorable Colly, uh colleagues and Honorable Members. We're almost at the end of our meeting, so I'll also try not to be too long. In the last presentations that we've had, tennis and swimming, um a lot needs to be done, a lot needs to be done. Um I, I think if, if there is transformation, it is really going on a snail pace uh or a tortoise pace even, I, I don't know if there is even transformation. Because um I believe that as people in general, we have interest. And once we are put in, in positions of power, uh then we are able to, like for instance, if you are a Sizopilamkeze who loves sports, uh if you are then put in a position of being a chairperson of sports, you then ensure that there is, there is transformation in sports, you ensure that there is actually life in sports, right? And I'm not accusing uh the board particularly, um I think it's, I think it's aquatics. I'm not accusing them of being, of being racist. Uh but I'm just saying that if there is no equal shared power amongst races, given our history, it does not assist us. Given our history, there is, one, there is a, there is just a, an issue of um, how do I put it? There, there is just an issue of trust issues, you know, um amongst ourselves as the people. Uh regardless of race, everyone wants to be represented by uh their own people. And I think it's part of the reasons why, uh from the times of Mandela, the issue of rainbow has been put as an emphasis to say, "We need to coexist as the people. We need to work together as the people," uh regardless of race, regardless of tribe. Because also, uh there is also an issue of tribe. Fortunately, it's not that rough in Guazulu Natal, but in other provinces, you find that there is also an issue not just of race, but there's also an issue of tribalism. These are the issues that unfortunately have a tendency of dividing a, a province that we are trying so hard to unite. So I think we need to acknowledge, I, I, I don't think we need an explanation as to why do we only have um a dominated board, uh a domi- a board uh of aquatics that is um dominated by white male and one um Indian. And in an exco, there's also, of course, not a single person that is uh black. And I think these are the issues that we, we refer to when we speak about transformation. The people of Guazulu Natal themselves, we, we need to be honest with ourselves and need to be honest with uh the statistics of the people of Guazulu Natal. The people that we are supposed to save this. The people that the Department of Sports and Culture is supposed to save this. If we were to classify them according to age, according to race, according to tribe, uh according to age as well, if you were to classify them, you'll be able to see, I'm sure in the research uh component of the department, you'll find it that um the, the consumers or the customers of the Department of Sports and Culture are these ones. And it will tell you that most of them are black. It will tell you that most of them are young. So it is particularly, it is important that in our unions, in our boards, that reflects uh the people that we are leading reflects. Because this is what you are going to find if we continue in this manner in which we are continuing. You are going to find that when we give success reports and we, when we highlight the success stories, there is, you only find maybe three cases of success stories of uh black children. And even those black children, you'll only mention Westville, you'll mention Hillcrest, you'll, you'll not mention uh so much Inanda or, or Umlazi or Kwamashu. And I think this is what we speak about when we speak about transformation. We don't only speak about uh the participants or the athletes that are in sports, but we also speak about those that are leading uh the sports. Because the mindset ought to change. The truth of the matter, unfortunately for us, uh well, it's better for us, we were born in ninety-two, ninety-three. It's better for us because we were born in a situation where uh we are now able to try and coexist amongst each other, black and white and Indian and colored. Unfortunately for us, we are, we are able to do that. But the truth of the matter is, the imbalances of the past have put us in a, in a, in a, in a sport where we're unable to fully trust each other without being represented. So that is why, even when the boards will, Honorable Members, select athletes to represent Guazulu Natal in a particular area, even when there is no foul play, you are bound to hear people um accusing you of having a foul play or, or alleging that has, there's been a foul play, there's been racism that has been applied. Because the, they do not trust that there is fair representation of race in the board itself, there is fair representation of gender in the boards themselves. Because this, these are very important things when we speak about transformation, we are supposed to speak about. In, 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 in the presentation, uh also, uh, uh of, 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 of aquatics, um the, the, it, it has been said in the report of the department that you have not been allocated uh due to, to, to non-compliance. And the last allocation was uh year twenty-one, twenty-two. I would want to find out from you, what have you done um to, to, to fix that? Uh because the department is, is not meant, the department is meant to assist unions. It is not meant to babysit unions. It is meant to assist unions, but unions themselves are supposed to be people who know exactly what they are doing and people who know what is it that they need to do to be compliant with the department. So that we do not, as, because the, the first people that are accountable to us as the committee is the department. So that we don't sit here with the department and accuse them of not, of neglecting a certain sport or of not being able to assist in a certain sport, where else that sport itself has its own leadership. We want to find out from the leadership, what is it that you have done to fix the issue of non-compliance? And if you still think that you are fit enough uh to continue leading the aquatics, And if you still think that you are fit enough to continue leading the Aquatics with these challenges that are, they would want to find out that. But we don't want to enter in those politics because those are your own politics. But I'm just saying, the fact that there's been 23, 24, you are not funded. There is 25, 26, it's still the same issue, 24, 25, it's still the same issue. I think there is, there's supposed to be unembeza, you know? What is unembeza in?
Conscience.
Some conscious, you know, from country. So sometimes English runs away. But there's supposed to be some sort of conscience, as you are leading, to say, but things are not going well. And have you pleaded with the department? If you have noticed and you have acknowledged that there are things that are not going well as far as swimming or aquatics is concerned, have you approached the department to say to the department, we are failing here, we are failing here, we are failing here? Can you please be able to assist us so that we are able to do what is our mandate? And also, I would like to find out, what is the selection criteria? I received a letter from one of the members of the KZN Legislature. And I had said, once maybe we get time, we would, fortunately for us, we have gotten time, that there's been a complaint on the selection criteria. There was a championship, swimming championship in Bloemfontein sometime this year. I think they had also written to you, maybe you'd be able to give us a response in that. Otherwise, I think as far as swimming is concerned, those are my concerns, that it is going to be very difficult for us to transform this sport code if we have not been able to transform even its management. I think maybe we need to start there and go downwards. But it's going to be very, very difficult. Because even the success stories that were told about are not necessarily those of the people that we save and the people that elected us. But also, I would want not to just complain and complain about swimming. I would want to commend you as far as women representation is concerned. I think you are doing well and there is more that also needs to be done. But I would want to commend you as far as female representation is concerned. Tennis, tennis is also one of the, of the sport codes that needs a lot of work. It really needs a lot of work as far as transformation is concerned. You have 60 coaches, only nine black, only six Indian. Forty-five of them are white, forty-four are male, sixteen are female. That alone should tell you that there is a lot of work that needs to be done. Because for as long as there is a race, I think, I think what President Mandela would say is that there should be no more white, black, Zulu, Badi. But we should be one. But for as long as there is one race that continues to dominate over the other, we're going to have issues, we're going to have problems. For as long as there is a race that feels underrepresented in these areas, then we're going to have issues. And while we are trying so hard to fight for social cohesion, but we need to be the ones that fix these issues and ensure that there is enough representation. I don't want to repeat what I just said. I think there is a clear evidence that there is no transformation or maybe little if there is transformation as far as tennis is concerned. HOD, please enlighten us on the case, if you know anything about it. And because it's the first time we hear about the court case that might put you in jeopardy. So I think it's important that maybe the committee is enlightened on the case so that if there is any intervention that is needed either by the department to be done, either by the department or by the committee, we are well aware of. I think we'll just need clarity on that. And I want to concur with Honorable Musimango on the issue of tennis courts that are not utilized. On your success stories, performance highlights, that's tennis. There is not a single, there is not a single village school or township school. If you found, if you find a black child that has done well, they are from Westville Boys or Marisberg or, but they are, they are actually tennis courts that you'll find in townships. Guamashu, for instance, Mungena-Gamashu, there is a tennis court that is used by local boys to play informal soccer. Do you have a program? My question is actually, do you have a program to go to townships as the board Yagatennis? Do you have a program to go to townships and work with the municipalities, of course? Because some of these facilities, we understand that they will not be either for, built by the department or by yourselves, they'll be built by the municipalities in partnership with the municipalities. Do you have a program to go to townships? I think that's it for me. HOD, maybe I can start by giving you.
Thank you, Honorable Chairperson, and we appreciate all the comments by the honorable members. I think on the court case, Chairperson, I know there's one that was mentioned by Honorable Mkosie. I think there was, was that not a court case you were talking about? I think there was an incident that she spoke to. On the court case, I don't know if I missed it. I'm just trying to establish which one, Honorable Chairperson. I must have stepped out of the room when the court case was mentioned. So maybe the colleagues can assist, maybe Mr. Bengu can respond to it. I honestly am sorry, I missed it, I missed.
No, no, it's not a problem. I think, I think some of your colleagues who are here can maybe help you while we are getting responses on other questions.
Thank you, Honorable Chairperson. I think the rest of the questions were directed to the federations concerned, the two, Aquatics as well as tennis. And I think the president may also want to have a bite, Honorable Chairperson, through you. And then we'll be the last ones as a department. Thank you.
Thank you. You may come in? Yes?
Thanks, thank you, Chair. Firstly, let me formally introduce myself. My name is Mafata Mududwani. I'm the Chief Operation Officer, sorry. I'm the Chief Operation Officer at Swimming South Africa, mandated to look at the administration of KZN Aquatics. Given all the comments that were shared with us, we welcome them. However, I would like to put it in this, in this house that swimming in KZN is no longer in threat, right? And my apologies, swimming people are very soft-spoken people. That's why, that's why we bring gold medals, because we don't make noise. Sorry. Part of, part of, part of the exercise was also to bring my colleague here from KZN Aquatics. Surely, I think he was shivering not going into the detail of his report, right? And I wanted, I did that deliberately because I wanted. It's part of growing him and the other committee members. So on the administration side of things, we are, and thanks to the HOD and the outgoing, the previous, Mr. Vijay, right? That I've been working closely with. I must put it in this house that we are, we finally have seen a way through into the finances that are outstanding. We firstly needed to deal with, with the core problem, which was the constitution and all the works. Constitution is done, we are due to have a, to call a special general meeting to table it to the members so as they can elect a board, right? Currently, we don't have a board in KZN. The names that we see, that are reflecting here are the names of people that are helping to administer, right? And some of them, they come from the head office. So apologies on that. Mr. John Ellis is our treasurer at Swimming South Africa, who's been working closely with Kelman, going through the statements. And the first, 2021, 2022, in the next week or two, they'll be sent off. And we've got a whole detailed timeframe of the remaining two. So everything would be done by November this year, right? And we will keep the department up to speed with our progress. The racism case, we've got to know about it. We take, we take such very serious at the national level. And however, we, if you look at, remember, if you would look at the report that was submitted by our, by our associate member, right? It's schools, it's associate member of swimming, right? We are out of the jurisdiction as our intervention was cut off by the headmaster to say that we have no jurisdiction with what happens in their schools. So that, that on its own, it cuts us off. But we've made sure that the two, you know, instead of putting impunitive measures, we looked at the corrective measures. So that these are young boys, that tomorrow they will, they will be adults. And we need to teach them things to be said, how to address people, how to conduct yourself. And the report that we've got, they're doing quite, quite very well in terms of that. They are attending the psychological, educational programs, right? When it comes to swimming, unfortunately, I'm going to be sounding like a broken record. Without a swimming pool, you will not have swimmers. In the past five years, we've not been having swimming pools in KZN. It's only now, since 2023, that when, when we took over the administration, we had a very serious engagement with the department and then with Etikweni Municipality. And since that, we've seen forty of the swimming pools being reopened, right? That five years of non-existence of pools, we had, we've digressed in terms of transformation of swimming in the province. And that was also giving us headaches at the national level. But since that, in the past two years, I can share that we, we as Swimming South Africa, we had, we had to come in and revitalize a lot of programs. One was the club development, where, and we made a commitment to Etikweni Municipality that for every swimming pool that you open, we'll set up a program. And then we've given them a priority of clubs that they needed a serious intervention because of the talent that was already brewing, right? I'll take for instance Guamashu, the G pool, right? Out of that program, we're sitting with about 15 athletes that were international standard athletes. We have since lost about six of them, right? The remaining, we had to do an intervention. We've included them in our national squad programs and we've seen a very good success. I'll start with diving. We have the two boys from Umlazi, sorry, not Umlazi, Lamonville, Anelam Tetwa and Anati, who have, with our intervention, they've managed to crack the international stage. They've both represented the country in last year. Anela went to the World Juniors. Anati went to the World Championships in Doha and also the University Games last year. And he is going to Germany in the next four weeks for the University Games as well. Unfortunately, Anati didn't attend Doha because of his passport issues. And with our intervention, we couldn't, and the Department of Home Affairs couldn't assist further because unfortunately, his passport was in the batch that was being going through an audit. So the audit took longer than we anticipated. We have artistic swimming in Umlazi. We had four athletes that have represented the country. Pindile Makaya went to Budapest and Doha, World Championships. We had Sipogasi, we had Ndoroso, Pumola, who both went to Slovakia as well. So we, our programs, our intervention as administration, it bears fruits. But there is a room for improvement, yes. If we could get more facilities and not just in the metro areas, in your other districts, where we are struggling, we are still struggling with the small local municipalities to buy in in the program of swimming pools. But with the intervention and the continuous support of the department, we're hoping that we'll get through that. Anything that I missed? I think I've covered most of the questions, unless if there's something I've missed.
No, thank you. I had to use headphones to.
Sorry, Chair.
To be able to, even the MEC had to use headphones to be able to hear you, but it's fine. Thank you very much, tennis.
Thank you. Madam Chair, can you hear me? Honorable Chair, I'm having the same problem. Just to, I think, I think there's been a bit of a misunderstanding about those athletes that I was talking about. Sia Boga Jaka, Simpiri, Lindo and Siplelele, the athletes I was talking about, they don't come from Westville. They, I said they came from Westridge Park. Now, at Westridge Park Tennis Stadium, we have a thriving development hub, all right? And these young people are from, from Cato Crest School in Cato Manor, all right? And from Mavel Primary. Now, they came, they came up through the ranks from when they were about eight or nine, all right? Certainly, Jaka and Simpiri, they were, just to tell you a little story, and I hope it doesn't offend anybody, but the young man, Jaka, we, we, we found him wandering around Westridge Park. And somebody did say to him, why don't you come and play tennis? And today, he's in the Junior Davis Cup team. He's playing, as I said, he's playing for the Harris, he's in the Harris Academy. So he's come from an informal settlement, Cato Crest School, and he's now in the Harris Academy in the Cape, right? So I think there's been a bit of, likewise with the other athletes. Sia Bong and Simpiri, the same. Siplelele, they are more recent children. Siplelele is now at Westville Boys. Oh Lindo's at Westphal Boys and as, as I said, he's got a scholarship from, but he's come from the same uh Cato Crest School and same uh informal settlement. So there's been quite, the, the youngster that I, the young man that I spoke about that is uh now a coach or a, a tennis instructor, he's from Cato Crest as well. So I, I think there was a bit of a, a mix-up there. Uh with regarding the tennis program at, at um at public facilities in rural areas, um I did say in my presentation that uh we are particularly weak in this area, all right? Despite the fact that we have got, we've got um a hub in Essa Kaleni near Richards Bay that's been running for at least uh five years. Uh and a lot of the time, this hub has run without assistance from us. Uh there's uh schools down in, in uh Ugu. Uh I think it's the Gliklima School that comes to one of the, comes to one of the South, the South Bloom Tennis Club. Uh uh they, they used to bring a squad of kids to the, the tennis club to be coached. So there, there, there are good things happening elsewhere, but I, I must admit it's not enough. And that's why I said in my presentation that we need to find a way to get closer to the sports uh officer in the different districts so that they can tell us there is, there is a, a facility here that has not been used or uh even, even better if there's a, a group of people that are playing at a facility in an area that's a municipality, a municipality area that we can access. And that, that's why, that's, I think, our way around to, to make sure that we cover lots of the areas that we aren't in at the moment. With regards to the court case, uh I don't know if the head of department wants to, has got more information, or should I answer?
You can respond, sir.
With regard to the court case around Westridge Park. At the end of twenty twenty-two, the municipality uh declared uh the the sport, the, the, the sign, the, the ad- the advertising sign uh on the N three, just on the border of our, of, of Westridge Park. They declared it illegal and they, they called for it to be taken down. Now that, that advertisement itself was the main finance stream for Etuquenem tennis. And it covered, it comfortably covered all the day-to-day expenses, the, the people that work there, you know, uh and general maintenance of the, of the facility, all right? Since then, that income stream has stopped and Etuquenem tennis are at a, at a stage where they've depleted all their funds. Uh all their workers are on short time, all right? Um and they are working from, financially from hand to mouth. Just trying to keep the facility at the level that it is now, right? The I T Fs, um the, we had a BRICS, a BRICS tournament. Um we, we hosted BRICS here in twenty twenty-three, right? The department helped with financing the refurbishment of nine of the, uh no, six of the courts, because they needed six courts, right? Without that assistance, we would not be here today because we, with those, with the assistance or with the condition of those six courts, it's held us in good stead to host the I T Fs that we've hosted since twenty twenty-three. Now, at the end of twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, we're getting to a stage now where we need to inject more money into Westridge Park to get the, the courts refurbished again uh so that tennis can continue. However, without, as a, the, the, the point that I'm trying to make, without that without that income stream, Westridge Park will be no longer. Um we've uh the lease for the stadium has got forty years. It's got thirty years, thirty-odd years to run still, right? And so it's not that the lease is up. However, the, there's, there's no income and there's not enough income from tennis-related uh unlike rugby and, and cricket. Uh there's not enough income from tennis-related functions to support that stadium.
Thank you very much, uh over to you, H O D. Or you want to give M E C first? Okay. Thank you, Honorable Chairperson. I think all the observations made by the members um are on point. And I think we match each other's energy in terms of understanding the depth of the issues eh that pertain to the two federations. I mean, if you look at the allocations, we did mention and you can already see eh that all the comments are really applicable even before you make the comments. Um so that is the first remark that one would want to make. But what this means is, it really, as members have said, requires a lot of um support and engaging with very uncomfortable uh questions in the process. What we are encouraged by is the fact that, you know, we really do have intervention with administration. We did turn around athletics. I think members would know that athletics also had to be put under administration. And to be honest with you, when we are close to the process and we get a good administrator, things do turn around. So we, we really um are hopeful that with this intervention and with us playing an active role in this whole intervention, things will definitely turn around. Honorable Members, I think the issue around the court case. We as a department are with um the federation in terms of the monetization of the board, the, uh the billboard. It is a very good strategy where you can actually turn a billboard into um a mechanism that generates revenue for you to run your operations. So it was a very good initiative, very innovative, and I think it's something that we also promote for sustainability. Now, for this one, I'm, 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 I'm sure that at admin- at an administrative level, one can engage O C M. We have tried, but it was a junior official in the department who has since left. I think this time we may, I personally am making that commitment to engage O City Manager. And when we have um a need for a political intervention, we will also make that um, you know, known to our political principals. But for now, I think the commitment would be to engage uh the City Manager because we, we really cannot discourage uh, you know, that, that effort that they were making. Um otherwise, Honorable Chairperson and, and Honorable Members, um the comments are noted. There is definitely a lot of work to be done. You really hit it on the nail. And the department will be there to ensure that there's consequences, but also to support. Because it's such a very dicey, very difficult balance to support and to, to also ensure, Wuti. We are not supporting and spoiling, but we are supporting to uplift. Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, Honorable M E C.
Uh thank you, Honorable Chairperson, Honorable Members, uh H O D federations. Uh I think it's to echo what the H O D has already stated, Honorable Chairperson, to say one does note eh the, the, the big gaps in terms of these two federations. And one does note that a lot of work has to be directed to them. So it's to make a commitment that, Chairperson, we, as the department, we have to get closer to them. And eh not just get closer, but also eh assist them in terms of eh them establishing targeted programs eh with timeframes. Eh so that eh when next we come back to the committee, eh there is visible change in terms of the issues of transformation, but also in terms of ensuring that eh the sport itself does spread eh throughout the province. It doesn't remain a sport that is for a selected few. I think we have to be aggressive on that one. Eh so I can commit, Chairperson, I don't know what kind of resolutions you'll take, but I can commit that as the department. And also the sport confet with the feder- two federations and others who may be in the same category. We'll have to come together, sit down and develop programs that address all these areas of concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much, eh M E C eh and colleagues, Honorable Members, Sia Bonga. Eh I think eh we, we note the, the responses. Um and we, we trust that moving forward, we'd be able to note eh where we have challenges and um do well, um where we are already doing well, but ensure that we maintain eh those good things that we're doing. And um the, the, the transformation that we're speaking about, eh Honorable M E C, is not a transformation to push other people out and let other people in. It's a transformation that says we need to coexist as the people and the people that are interested in sports, they do coexist. The people from rural areas do not feel like they're inferior than the ones that are in S suburbs or eh as far as the court case is concerned, thank you very much, H O D. I don't even think this matter needs to be in court, honestly. It's very minor. I don't even think it needs to be in court, but we trust you, H O D, that you'll be able to to work it out and escalate with eh the, 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 the municipality. I think eh there are many issues that we have noted. Eh amongst them is the need to work with eh the municipalities um in ensuring that we spread sport. Amongst them is to try and bring in the pub, the, the private sector eh as far as eh eh funding is concerned, because we understand that the department will not be able eh to do it all. Eh I'd like to say apologies to the swimming eh 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 people. I don't think that you had eh given us exactly what your positions are and we really assumed that you are a board of Guazuru Natal, but eh be that as it may, you carry whatever that happens within the aquatics of Guazuru Natal and hence eh the questions have been eh posted to you. Otherwise, we would like to thank eh all the unions that are here. We understand some of you are off-season. Eh but you made time eh to come to this eh meeting. We would like to give a commitment as the committee that we are not only going to end in this meeting, but on the reports that you have given as the Confederation of Guazuru Natal President, as the unions, we are going to be coming to your, to your, to your areas and we are going to be coming to your spaces as the committee to actually see if what you are talking about is actually happening. And eh sometimes we are going to make an un- unannounced visit so that we can actually see that eh what is on paper is on the ground as well and we are able to tally it correctly. Thank you very much, M E C. We understand eh U P Z, but thank you very much for taking today and coming to the committee, H O D and the whole team eh Sia Bonga Akul. Would like to also thank eh the Team Year Cricket, Team Year Rugby Sports Confederation as well for the gifts that we're giving to the honorable members eh. We thank you very much. The department, again, will say, I will always give you gifts, it's fine. But eh thank you very much eh eh for, for, for actually respecting this meeting and coming to this meeting and being able to engage in an open manner in which you, you, you did. Eh as we said, it's our first of many meetings. They're still going to happen. Honorable Members, eh thank you very much eh for sitting eh in this meeting eh until its end. Eh we are still going to have our own Goyaza and of course, not today, but we'll have our own meeting where eh we now deliberate and debrief on this particular meeting and then be able to extract decisions from that. Eh colleagues from the legislature, thank you very much eh for being with us and assisting us even with the recording eh the meeting. Eh lunch is served eh, M E C, eh colleagues, eh just when you go to eh just as you go to eh the, the dinner, I mean, the, the lunch, um the dining hall, yeah, it's called dining hall, yeah. Eh as you go to the dining hall, lunch is served. Thank you very much to everyone. Eh the meeting is officially adjourned.